With that, it is 5:30. I am going to call this regular meeting of the Morton County Commission to order on June 24, 2025. First item in business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I'm going to do the roll call. Commissioner Tokash.
Here.
Commissioner Buckley.
Here.
Commissioner Zachmeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Morrell, are you online? He's got it muted right now. Okay. Commissioner Morrell? Okay, we know he's, as you see, I'm up there online. Commissioner Baim, I'm here. We also have Auditor Roan, Sheriff Kirkmeyer, and State's Attorney copy in the back of their room back there. First, we'll have the approval of the agenda. I will add number seven to the list. We have an approval of the park director retirement.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the agenda as corrected.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with the correction or addition. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from the June 10, 2025, regular meeting of the Morton County Commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the June 10, 2025, regular meeting of the Morton County Commission. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now, we also have the minutes from the Morton County Tax Equalization Meeting on June 10, 2025.
I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the Morton County Tax Equalization Meeting on June 10, 2025. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Monthly bills was Commissioner Morrell ended up being out of town today, so I took his place. I went through the bills. No problems today. I move that we would approve the bills and payroll.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills and payroll. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we have a roll call vote. Commissioner Zachmeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tokash.
Yes.
Commissioner Morrell.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. All right. Got through all the necessary stuff at the beginning. We're going to move right into our agenda tonight. I have quite the packet to look at, but I don't think it'll take as long as it actually looks. First is Natalie Pierce, their planning director.
Now, a note for Commissioner Morrell. He won't be able, we won't be able to hear him while I have the slides up, so I'll try to switch it back as soon as we're done, I'm done presenting.
We'll get him for the vote.
Yeah. Okay, our first item is the Hartman subdivision. This is in the southeast quarter of Section 31, Township 140 North, Range 89 West. This is located about four miles east of Hebron. So, this is the rail facility. It's located, the subdivision's located right out there. Applicants are Curtis and Erica Hartman. They are just looking to break off one residential lot of 1.86 acres from a section. Southwest water and more Grand Sioux power can be extended to serve this subdivision. They're dedicating the right-of-way that we have prescribed for this road and the utility easement. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval, and I can take any questions.
Commissioners, have any questions for Natalie? I'm ready for a motion.
I would move to recommend approval of the final plat of the short-form subdivision known as Hartman subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the final plat of the short-form subdivision known as Hartman subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Got to cycle through again, sorry. Our next item is the Sweetbrier Third subdivision. This is in the southwest quarter of Section 27, Township 139 North, Range 83 West. This is located about two and a half miles south of the I-94 County Road 83 interchange and immediately south of the Sweetbrier School. So, that interchange, if you go down, Sweetbrier School is right there. The subject property is right there. Applicants are Sheldon and Cheryl Wolf. So, like the older town sites that got divided up a long time ago with street grids and smaller lots, those are still kind of hanging out there in the county. They are looking to combine all those small parcels and a couple of auditor lots into one residential parcel. They're dedicating right-of-way, utility easements, and an access easement for the rest of the quarter. This line shows the extent of the 100-year special flood hazard area. So, most of this lot is in the special flood hazard area, but there is a location here where one could conceivably put a home that's out of that flood hazard area. So, this is 11.45 acres, looking for rezoning from ag to residential. Planning and zoning commission did recommend approval, and I can take any questions.
Bring Ray back up. There we go. Commissioners, have any questions for Natalie?
Mr. Chairman, you ready for a motion?
I am.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve of the final plat of the short-form subdivision known as Sweetbrier Third subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Second.
Oh, sorry, Ray.
We'll give him one. It's been moved and seconded to approve the final plat of the short-form subdivision known as Sweetbrier Third subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
Then, I just wanted to make one note for the commission. We, at Planning and Zoning Commission meeting tomorrow, are going to review the first draft of the CO2 sequestration ordinance for the land use code. And, you know, I think that will probably set the tone for most rural industrial uses in general, you know, data centers and all that that will come afterwards. So, just a note that that is going on tomorrow.
After you see that at Planning and Zoning, can you send me, email me a copy?
Yeah, it's online.
It is, okay.
Yep, I'll send you the link, but.
That's fine.
Also, it certainly won't be the only hearing that we have.
Oh, no.
Yeah, but I will, I'll send it to you.
It's the start.
Yes, just the start. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Don, you want to do your abatements? I know we have Eagle View on, but we want to give him plenty of time.
Okay. Got to get to that page here. We got a few of them for you tonight.
I'll have to jump ahead here, guys, sorry.
Okay. The first one up is abatement 7119. This comes from the city of Mandan. It is for a veteran's credit for 2024. The city of Mandan agenda documentation is attached.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve abatement number 7119 as a veteran's credit for the city of Mandan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve veteran's credit for the city of Mandan for 2024, abatement 7119. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, Ray.
Okay. Next abatements are 7120 and 7121. These again come from the city of Mandan for a veteran's credit, same property, 2023 and 2024. And again, the city of Mandan agenda document is attached.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move to.
Go ahead, Ray.
Approve abatements number 7120 and 71, what was it, 7121?
Yes.
I can't pull up my docs on my phone right now. The abatement says noted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 7120 for 2023 and 7121 for 2024 for veteran's credit abatement for the city of Mandan. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. And then finally, we have three homestead credit abatements. Those are 7122 through 7124. 7122 is for mobile homes for 2025. The others, 7123 is for Morton County for '23, and then we have the same property for Morton County, 7124 for 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve abatements number 7122, 7123, and 7124 for homestead credit as presented.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 7122 for 2025, 7123 for 2023, and 7120, 7124 for 2024 for mobile home abatements. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So, we'll hold off on the Eagle View. That's all you had for that?
Yep.
John, we have 15 minutes. Think you can get all those 80 pages out of our packet?
Yeah.
So, just for the commissioners up here and anybody following along, we've got a gravel pit lease and we've got a bridge project. Those are the two that we'll be working on until we hit our public hearing. Whichever order you would like.
Okay. We'll start with the right-of-way purchase. Good evening, commissioners and auditor Roan. As daunting as it looks, it's not that, it's not as bad. It is basically one project. It has two bridges, and each of those bridges have a property owner on each side. And we followed the North Dakota DOT as well as all the federal regulations. And for acquiring this right-of-way and using those requirements provides a need for a great deal of paperwork to verify that we have followed all the rules and regulations. We have permanent right-of-way on both project, or on both bridges, I should say, the one project. We have a temporary easement on each of those. And we do have on the bridge at Chontapita Creek, a permanent easement. And that's an easement in, because in the past, we've had issues downstream which are off the right-of-way, things like drift and sedimentation. And that way, we want to be able to access those areas to clear that out. And so, that would explain the permanent easement. The two temporary easements are small, so they're the minimum of $300 per easement. And the permanent right-of-way was acquired and the compensation was determined using our approved policy within, with the number of sales, previous sales for each of those areas as we had approved back in 2022 under the guidance of our tax director. So, it comes to a total for this project, the two bridges, of the permanent right-of-way, temporary easement, and the permanent easement of $4,060.44. And I, it has been budgeted for this project, and I would be open to any questions.
So, John, do you want it under a project number or the two bridge numbers?
It would be, put it under the two bridge numbers so that we keep them separate. The project number is basically a DOT requirement, but any right-of-way that is acquired has to be paid.
Per bridge, by the bridge.
We can't use that, yeah, by bridge, and it has to be with our own money. It can't be through federal funds. So, I would like to do it with the two bridge numbers.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions for John? Pretty straightforward.
I would, Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the offers negotiated for right-of-way and temporary easements for a total of $4,060.44 needed for permanent right-of-way and a maintenance easement and temporary easements for the replacement of bridges. The bridge numbers are 30-152-35.0 and 30-158-27.0.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve purchase of right-of-way, maintenance easement, and temporary easement for bridge replacements for a total of $4,060.44. For replacement of bridges, 30-152-35.0 and 30-158-27.0. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those. All those opposed? Motion carries.
And with that, you've cleared 78 pages. My next item is authorization to execute a gravel pit lease for 2025. As we have mentioned probably every time I've been up here talking about gravel leases, we need gravel for our roads, and we need it hopefully in a strategically located place so we don't have to haul a lot, but it's getting more and more challenging. And so, last year, or year before, excuse me, we went to the Calver pit. And this year, in 2025, we negotiated a lease with the Calvers again. And this is one area that it's, I won't say centrally located, but it is not bad. And there is enough gravel there for many, many, many years. So, when we're not too sure where we would like to, or where we can get the gravel, we can always fall back on the Calver pit, and that's what we've done over the years. Right now, we plan on crushing 40,000 yards there, but based on how it's bid, and we are bid, we have another pit that we all, we have an extended lease on for three years. We're going to crush 40,000 there. So, we're looking at our typical 80,000 cubic yards for the year, 40,000 to come out of this. Depending on the bid price, we could crush a little bit more if we get a good price. If not, if we get a higher than we're expecting, then we may have to cut it back to stay within budget. But we have had some interest from crushers in this year that we have not had in the past, so people asking for bid packets. So, hopefully, we'll get a good price. We got a very good price last year and the year before, so we're hoping we can carry that on and, and instead of crushing 40,000, maybe 45,000 or 50,000 yards so that we have some in reserve. Because right now, it is getting more and more challenging, especially in the western part of the county. So, with that, we do have gravel crushing budgeted, and I'd be open to any questions you may have.
John, when, when do we plan on crushing? Is it?
We have, we will, once we get this, we will advertise the bid, the request for proposals. We are having, we have a due date of, the bids will be due July 8th, and we'll contact the road commission. We'll review them there through email and then bring them to the full commission on the, at the 10th meeting. No matter, it seems like whenever we bid, whether it's early in the year, mid-year, they typically move in after Labor Day. And then, so we'd be looking at sometime after Labor Day, September into October to crush.
Commissioners, have any other questions for John for the gravel pit lease? If not, I would accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the highway department to execute gravel pit lease for the Calver pit for 2025. Term of lease to expire on December 31, 2025.
Second.
Second.
He's a little slow. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the highway department to execute gravel pit lease for the Calver pit for 2025 with the contract ending December 31, 2025. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Now, we wait. We got, you only have the public hearings left. We still have about seven minutes. Don, want to do one of the board appointments? We might as well. Don't pay to sit here. Let's just lead off the Morton Mandan Public Library Board. We have one position for a three-year term expiring 6/30 of 2028. We have two applicants. And I did put all the updates for the library in their packet, so we're good, Barb. Just give everybody a second here to find it in their packet.
Okay, so we have two applicants for the library. It's Kelly Spillman and Linda Beckler. And I'm trying to find my, my pages are all mixed up here now.
I've been flipping you around. I'm staying in order.
So, we just have one position, but we have two applicants.
Okay. I think Linda's online and Kelly's in the audience. So, Kelly, do you want to come up and say something? Give you a chance.
I'm Kelly Spillman. I live at 2601 Highway 1806 South rural Mandan. And I would pull, I would withdraw and endorse Linda Beckler for the position if I could. And that might make life easy. And I'll play this game another some other time, okay?
You can do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for applying. So, then I'll move, Linda, do you want to speak to the position? Just get her mic off. Linda Beckler, can you hear us? I hope she's, she doesn't have to say anything. All right, commissioners, if she speaks up while we're talking here, we can move on. There is no audio at this point, Ray Morrell. So, we'll give it a second here to see if we can pull up some audio.
I can hear.
Now, you can?
I can hear, correct.
Okay. Is Linda Beckler, can you hear us? Technology is so much fun. Ray's got a little, I think. Give her a ch. Anything yet, Linda?
She said, can I accept for her, please? She's not getting the, her speaker's unmuted. She's not able to get the.
Okay. Commissioners, have anything? I haven't read through them. I think both applicants were very good, so we had one withdraw. That leaves us with one, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Ms. Linda Beckler to the Morton Mandan Library Board for the current term, and we give appreciation to Ms. Spillman for her consideration.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman, with the term expiring 6/30 of 2028.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Linda Beckler to the Morton Mandan Public Library Board for a position of a three-year term expiring 6/30 of 2028. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I think we're going to hold off on the rest. We got about two minutes here. I got a little ramad here. Yep. So, now I back up. Gravel pit lease. All right. I wonder why we're waiting, because it's published at 6 o'clock in case anybody wants to come online by then, so we give them that chance. We only have about a minute left here. All right, it is 6 o'clock. I think we will, Don. I think we will, Don, wanna go over it a little bit, and then we'll open the hearing?
I will give you some, some background on this.
Yep.
This is for Ensel's eleventh subdivision special assessment district. And the residents of the eleventh, Ensel's eleventh, had submitted the required number of signatures to establish a special assessment district. The resolution of necessity was approved, and the public hearing was scheduled for June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. The notice of the hearing was published in the Mandan News prior, thirty days prior to this public hearing, and was published twice as required by North Dakota Sentry Code. Courtesy letter was sent to each resident, and was mailed on April thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. In that letter, I explained the, what was going, what was gonna happen, explained the protest period, and the fact that there will be a public hearing at this, at this meeting this evening. And since then, I have received four written protests in, for this project. And as stated in forty dash twenty-two dash eighteen, in the North Dakota Sentry Code, protest barred proceeding. The protest to contain the names of the owners of a majority of the area, which is fifty percent, included within the improvement district, the protest shall be a bar against proceeding with any special assessment for the improvement project. With those four written protests, that is sixty-five percent of the area of this district, therefore, it is barred from proceeding. So, with that, I guess we can do whatever the wishes of the commission are.
Do we even need the, the public comment, 'cause it's barred by Sentry Code?
It's barred by Sentry Code and the four written protests, being a, a majority of the area.
How do we handle?
We need to pick a motion to deny. We need a motion to deny, but we need to quote the Sentry Code.
Yeah.
In that denial.
Do we want any hearing, any public comment?
Well, it's open for a public hearing, we gotta take.
We have the public hearing, so I will open up for public comment. There isn't a whole lot we can do with sixty-five percent, as far as Sentry Code tells us, we can't move forward. But you can still, I will allow for public comments, so with that, I will open the public hearing if somebody would like to make a comment on this one.
Mr. Chairman, can we make a, make it clear that we're talking about eleventh?
Right, just the eleventh.
Yep.
Before I- State your name and, and your address.
Yes, sir, my name's Brad Savageo, I live on thirty-five forty-six Honey Lane. I've been there for, we purchased in November of twenty eighteen, and we've been built since twenty twenty. Regarding, before I even, going by spiel here, so to speak, this particular subdivision has nine lots. Eight of them have an acre and a half, that's twelve acres. One of them has thirteen. So, regardless of any petition, if they're ever, if there's an additional, if there's the same petition next year, and we get eights, eight signatures, that ninth one will negate any and all improvement, improvements to this development. It will dictate, this one property, this one property from this subdivision would dictate and negate any and all improvements, if they deem that they want to. We ask that you consider fairness and sensible policy in this particular instance, because this is, in fact, it's just an extension of Ensel's acres. Everyone's got an acre and a half, except for one property, they're, we're all in the same covenants. The ninth acre, the ninth property is basically exempt from a lot of the policy in the covenants, but ultimately, we're one neighborhood. It's a square area, so to speak, with the ninth property being lumped in with this subdivision found its way to having more prop, more, more mass of property. They're all individual residential properties, they're all zoned for residential. The one, the ninth, is zoned for potentially, basically a hobby farm. They're allowed livestock, horses, this type of thing. It's not like this is a quarter of land, and there's three people that live in this quarter of land, there's nine properties. Eight of them are equal in size. So, if I may just go through our request, it'll take me just a couple of minutes, and I hope you hear what I'm saying, and potentially allow for a policy change on this particular instance. So, I live on Honey Lane.
So, Brad, just as a point of reference here, it's Sentry Code, not our policy.
Okay.
So, it's your legislators that changed that.
Is it possible to appeal a Sentry Code?
Not through us.
How do you appeal, how do we?
That would be through your legislature, honestly.
It would have to be appealed through legislation, and that legislation had to be signed into law by the governor.
As, as much as we might agree with you, we don't have that say.
Please hear me out then, for the rest of it.
Yep.
Appreciate that. There's a conversation that has been had many times amongst the entire neighborhood property owners over the last five years, and the majority, sixty-six, have agreed that the, sixty-six percent have agreed that the time to build is right now. Our two-street development has, it's a two-street development, basically two city blocks. It's very small, it's not, we're not talking about a big massive undertaking of nine properties. Our two-street development has nine lots with a sixteen-school-aged children residing on Honey Lane, and there are sixteen school-aged children residing on Honey Lane and Shaw Drive. The benefit for their utilization would be significant on its own, not to mention the priceless benefit of the property owners for just over, overall quality of life. It is understood that some may say that it may present a financial burden, but we would say that the regard, that regarding the price of the build, the time is right now, considering that the price will never be this low. Labor and material costs were, will never go down, and considering all of the other roadwork to be performed in our immediate area, the bulk rate to be shared with these projects would reflect a significant rate decrease right now. Those other projects are Ensel Acres Overlay, Sioux Street, Aricara, Haddaza are all getting paved, that's going from pave, gravel to pavement, and Yellow Jacket Drive and Yellow Rose Circle have all been petitioned, and they're getting paved. These projects are just a few miles apart, would reflect a favorable bid from the road construction, road construction company. An argument may be made regarding the resiliency of the road, considering there are three more lots left to completely build their respective home structures upon. The concern is that the concrete trucks may compromise the road, but the reality is, is that the entire Ensel Acres development was paved in two thousand and five, prior to three-quarters of the homes being built, and it has held up fine. It is just now twenty years later, receiving the overlay for maintenance. Any consideration to overturn the petition based on a one-property owner's single property size, even though there are only nine properties with six petition signatures out of nine, would be a completely unfair consideration, lacking total sensibility. If the petition were to be overturned, because one property has the lion's share of the new development, then that would mean we could get eight signatures in the future, and this property would dictate, and this, this property would dictate any and all potential improvements to the subdivision. This would be an incredible contradiction to fairness and rational policy. And I realize, which said it's, it's a Sentry Code, but it's a, it does not apply here, it's not fair. Considering the county's stance on mandatory road pavements for new developments, we should not be denied our paved road. Our request is fair, and one cannot argue the significant quality of life that this project will provide.
It's not that we don't disagree with you.
I, I have a question, Mr. Chairman, I don't know who can answer this, but I was wondering why that thirteen-acre parcel is a part of that subdivision? I, I guess I don't understand why it is, when that was a separate, um, it was owned by a separate person, and it was never a part of the development of that Ensel.
It was subdivision, when the subdivision was requested, that was part of it.
Okay, that's how it got put together, okay.
So, it just so happens that it's, it got lumped in with the other, well, initially, there was ten properties, and then one property was relatively undevelopable, so it got subdivided between two neighbors. And now, there's only nine properties.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment? As, as far as following Sentry Code, we can't, we can't go beyond that, so that, that's fairly clear. But I would encourage you and the rest of the development owners to think a little creatively. I don't have a solution for you, but, you know, we can't use this process. That's, that's, that's not going to happen, but maybe that's a different process we can go, that you guys can go about getting your road paved. I don't know what that is at this point.
I don't either.
We could, you know, again, this probably isn't the, the right forum for brainstorming, but, you know, let's, let's think about this after the meeting.
Okay, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
I would guess that you're gonna have to talk to that other property owner and try and convince him.
I would say that's probably a dead horse being beat.
Because if you wanna go through this process, that's the only way.
Yeah, there might be some-
There's one more other way.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you, just.
Mr. Chairman, question for the county engineer and the state's attorney. There's been other subdivisions where property was deliberately left off the, uh, request for a special assessment, for basically the same reason, that that property owner would, and that family would control too much acreage and would kill the entire project. So, why can't the person that is on this particular project be left off, would not get the special assessment, that would bring the acreage under control, and then the rest of them would also have to absorb that person's special assessment, and then they would have the percentage needed to go forward? Can that person that is opposed be left off the special assessment? Redraw it, reissue it? Hurry up with the public hearing? Because it's been done before, why can't it be done in this situation?
From the highway department perspective, we would have no issues, it would be a state's attorney's question, I mean, we certainly could do it.
Because I believe that would be consistent with a state's attorney's opinion previously. There, that, if it's about the acreage, and the one-man-one-vote principle, then leave the acreage off of it, and that person would basically get a paved road for free, but at least then, it's paved.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, that's what I was thinking. Is just redraw it, and leave out the, I guess you could say-
The opposing landowner.
Yeah.
I don't know how much the special assessments was gonna be spread out per landowner, but what is, there's nine landowners affected in this one, correct?
Yes.
So, would we just pave, Commissioner Zach Meyer, just Honey, what, what's the name, Honey, Honey Lane, is that it then?
And it would get paved, but that-
But Shaw Drive is the one that goes into the other property, right?
So, if we live in Shaw Drive, and just got, everybody lives immediately on Honey Lane, we could rezone it?
Not necessarily rezone it, but you could re-special assess it.
For, for just Honey Lane.
Yeah, that's what I, that's my question.
That's what I'm thinking, 'cause it's been done before.
Sure. We would be fine with that.
Yeah, 'cause we can't go with the Sentry Code part of it, we gotta leave it, but if we redraw some lines-
Redraw the lines, and then-
Which portion is getting assessed?
And that might mean a whole new petition. And then to try to get it, that it's all done in one project with the neighboring projects, you'd have to go fast and get on the net, you know, and I know there's timeframes about public hearings and stuff, but you would have to, the rest of the neighbors would have to do their due diligence to get on, and get on the agenda, and then the acreage would no longer be an issue. Am I right, or am I wrong on that? Yep.
Yes, Commissioner Zach Meyer, I agree with you. That could be tried.
Mr. Chairman, one point is, if the, the cost of the project changes significantly, it voids all of the petitions, we have to start over, is that correct?
What do you mean that? You mean the cost, once we receive the bids?
Correct, because basically, we've got an estimated cost right now.
Correct.
And so, if we leave one lot owner, or one owner off of that, then I'm assuming that the rest of the owners would be picking up significantly more cost.
If we're gonna pave both Honey Lane and Shaw Drive, yes.
And it would exceed the cost that was estimated in.
That we would actually, bef, when we would rework the petition and change the border, boundary, we would adjust the, the estimate accordingly. So, that it, the estimate per lot would be higher than it is now, which is roughly about thirteen thousand dollars. But then, uh, it, but then that would not have any impact on any of the other projects that are being bid, so.
But would it be the same cost if we did not pave Shaw Drive?
What we would end up doing is, we are putting together plans, and there, there's going to be a section for each of the subdivisions, so that when it comes time for the assessment, we know how much each subdivision is going to be assessed. We are taking those quantities and putting them together on a recap sheet, so when the contractor's looking at the bid, he's looking at eleven thousand tons of asphalt. He's looking at one item of mobilization. And then, and, and what we've done is taken the quantities from each of those four sections, or five sections, if we go through with this one, and that makes up our, our total. And because I feel it's safe to do it that way, because everything is so close together, it's not like we're doing one project here, one in New Salem and one down in Flasher, where it's going to have an impact on delivery of materials and things like that. They're all gonna be very, very similar, so I feel we can lump them together and give the, of the contractor a, you know, larger single item of each material to bid. I, I don't know if that answers your question.
Mr. Seki, just one quick question now, if we exclude, on this particular portion of it, if we exclude said lot owner, does that mean the amount of, of bituminous would go down? Or are we just gonna pave the whole thing?
Okay, it depends on, are we going to, once again, are we going to pave both Honey Lane and Shaw? If it does, the bituminous quantities remain the same. If we're going to exclude Shaw Drive, then the quantities will go down, whatever that amount is.
So, we need to know what we're doing.
Yeah, so those landowners need to decide what they want to do.
That is correct, so that we can accurately prepare the petition.
So, if they're going to want to just pave Hot, um, Honey Lane?
And exclude Shaw, then we revise all the quantities.
Okay.
And if they wanna include everything, we leave the quantities, we just revise the boundaries.
But then their cost will go up if we include Shaw Drive? I just wanna make sure you landowners all understand what's gonna happen here. If we include Shaw Drive, your cost is gonna go up.
But if we disclude Shaw Drive, we need to submit an petition.
Correct.
Which could take, could be expedited within thirty days?
Uh, no, well, on our end, in the highway department, we could expedite it. The only issues we have are the advertising for the public hearing, which we're having tonight, because that is also spelled out in the Sentry Code. We are dealing with the Sentry Code. So, we have certain requirements, like I said, in the, in my little introduction, we have to have thirty days from when it's first advertised. That's the earliest we can have a public hearing. And then, then, unless we were to have a special commission meeting at the end of that thirty days, rather than waiting for the two weeks, or whatever it may be, to the next full commission meeting. I I don't know if that's an option. That would be one way in which we could expedite it, so we would get the petition signed and get the sixty percent. Advertise for the uh public hearing and then go right on the thirty first day after it's first advertised with a public hearing.
That would be the fastest.
That would be the quickest, but once again, that may not fall on a regular commission. That's why some of these meetings, uh the the hearings actually fall, you know, may not thirty days, but maybe thirty seven, forty two. Because of the way the the commission meetings fall. And then the other thing is, we we would have to have this done, I don't wanna go any further than August first. Otherwise, we're starting to run into scheduling issues. I know the contractors are are anxious because we're still getting calls wanting to know what we have to bid and when. And uh if we start getting into August, it's it's a little bit harder to to get something going. But I mean, it can be done, it's just that then once again, then we're starting to cross a line in which we get to a point where. If we wanna have it done and we wanna have it done, say by October twentieth. Then the prices may go up because they're probably gonna have to work weekends and things like that. Which if we were able to get it bid in July, we may not run into those issues. What do you mean by hypothetical bid? You mean to build an alternate bid with uh with and without with Shaw? And we could definitely bid it that way. It's just we have to be very clear when we write the the plan notes and the the contract documents that they're aware of that. So that we could move forward and if it falls through or it doesn't work, then we would just change order it out. Yeah, that that is a workable solution as well.
John, so looking at the calendar, um the next earliest publication you'd be able to get it in the Mandan News would be next week Friday. And then twenty eight days from there is, I mean, thirty days from there is July twenty eighth.
Just five days after our meeting.
So then if it was the next commission meeting, that'd be that first one in August.
August seventh.
Mister Chairman, must we call a special meeting?
Sure we can afford.
That's the only other option.
Would it be possible to, for example, if we call a special, just have it, oh no, we'd have to have a public hearing though. We couldn't do it ver- completely virtually, we would have to have the public hearing.
Come up to the mic, please. We want the recording to pick up everything.
Thank you, I'm Erin here, I live at twenty one eighty five Shaw Drive, so we're the bad people with the thirteen acres. And I do know that after the original petition was sent out, that the one of the original signers, at least one, I think a couple um. Were uh misunderstood what it was for, so even we're not the only, like one of the four petitions. That the one of the four protest letters that had come in um was from someone who had originally signed. So we're talking a lot about us, but it's not just, you know, the so then there was some backtracking of people who had originally signed, so I just. I guess wanna put that on record that there needs to be some discussion in the whole development, because it's not quite what, it's not the sixty six percent that originally was there.
Wasn't just one that protested, there's four, right, right.
There was an original signer that also had protested, so just to say it's not, we're not the only.
And they're all, all four protesters were on Shaw Drive?
Nine people, no, um three were on Shaw Drive, it's our three were on Honey Lane. We were just the one on Shaw Drive, so without that other person that signed, they wouldn't have had the sixty six percent, they wouldn't have had enough to go for it anyway. But that's all I wanted to say.
Mister Chairman, quick question, what was the percentage that had to be made that is not being made now?
As far as the 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 area?
Yeah, you said there was a percentage that would make it fall under like sixty five percent or something.
Well, if if they have sixty five percent of the area protested and if it's over fifty percent. Then it's barred from proceeding. And the original is we have to have sixty percent of the property owners sign the petition, which they did at the time earlier this year.
So the the this would be that the project failed to meet fifty percent.
Correct, it was.
And then what was the century code site?
I was the the number in the code, forty dash twenty two dash eighteen. Bar uh protest bar to proceeding.
One second, John, if even if you take the one large one out, does it still fail with the other three? That's just trying to figure that in my head here, it's not working. So yes, sir, you can, you may come up while John figures that out for us.
My name's Dalton Berger, um I currently live at forty six fourteen Crown Point Road Northwest Mandan. I uh purchased a lot on Honey Lane last year. Um when I did sign the petition, it was brought by another lot uh lot owner. And I was told that it was just to get bids. I thought I was signing um just to see what cost would be. Um so I am the one signature, uh one of the protests against um. Once I found out that it was not to get a bid, uh I kinda felt tricked into signing, so. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Chalkraft, I live at thirty five thirty one Honey Lane. And I would have to concur that when I was approached about signing the petition, there was a lot of misleading information. But that was spoken to me. So I'm not sure we have that much support if there was true transparency. And now with the new potential of not including that thirteen acre lot. If Shaw. Um Drive or Lane, I'm not sure what is, is included in the paving and the burden is only on the houses on Honey Lane. I think that needs to be hundred percent transparent and they need need to all be aware of it. And I would suspect that there's not gonna be as much support if they're paying for somebody else's road.
If they change it, as we've been talking, it'd be thirty seven percent would protest, given the the poor protests that have been received.
So you'd be at sixty three.
So no, thirty seven would protest, so yeah, uh that'd be below the fifty percent threshold, so we could proceed.
We still gotta go through the, still have to go through the petition deal, that's just the way you'd have to do it. Because we we're not gonna uh, yeah, we can't go against century code that hard.
Oh no.
We'd get in big trouble for that.
Yeah, we would have to just, like like you said, we can uh, they can talk among themselves and. Decide what you wanna do and let me know and we can proceed with a new petition or whatever. Go from there. And then we can talk about trying to expedite things like the public hearing, that sort of thing.
So John, make sure, I guess, when we get that petition written up, that it says what it's supposed to say. They're gonna have to decide that, but you know, and so we make sure the the information on the petition is correct.
Because we have the same, we use the same format for every petition. So, yeah, it it it'll be the same as as what we've had in the past for others successful.
Mister Chairman, can I make a comment? And and for anyone that's out there and and whatever happened with misunderstanding what's on the petition. Read the petition, if you need to get it in front of some legal counsel, whatever, that's fine, but if if there's another petition coming around, make sure you read what's on there. Because it is the same, it is the same form.
And the other thing is, if there is any question, call me. We're the office that puts it out and we'll, I'll answer your questions. And uh so if if there's any questions, just let me know. I can't referee between property owners, but if there's a question as to what of the interpretation of the petition. What we're trying to accomplish and how we're trying to pay for it, I can definitely answer those questions.
As Commissioner Zach Meyer said, if we were to move forward, a court challenge would never, we'd never survive that. It would get killed real quick. So um in fairness, we've allowed a few people to talk, is there anybody online that wanted to say something on Ensel's eleventh? Okay, make one more. Anybody else online? All right, then we'll have, we have one more gentleman at the microphone.
Commissioners Jesse here, twenty one eighty five Shaw Drive. My question would be is if this is something to look at, go forward and I'm just, I'm kinda asking you guys, what would be the thoughts and and how would things? In the long effect of it, so let's say Honey Lane gets paved, Shaw Drive doesn't. You've got garbage trucks turning around on which is somewhat, it's a semi cul-de-sac, you wanna say. So they're gonna be pivoting and cranking on and off gravel onto asphalt at the edge. Um county blade's gonna have to come down and either turn onto Honey Lane asphalt. It's basically, they can't come into my road, it's private road. I mean, my thought would, I don't wanna put a, it it just all needs to be figured out and made right for everybody. Is what this really comes down to and the timing and and adequate surface to last. Um I have photos of the bike path and the approachment coming off of eighteen oh six. Since the start of the of the development, the buildup there and in the last two years, it's completely crumbled. So the bike path coming off of eighteen oh six um is, I mean, it's it's collapsed, it's busted up. I don't know what the over, what the bike path and the approachment off of eighteen oh six, the thicknesses of that. But just from the trucks, we're different out there compared to Ensel Acres as far as what we see for traffic. We are more on the county side of things, so for garbage trucks, um things like that. We're seeing trucks coming in with mud on them, they back up to the garbage dumpsters, I have dumpsters on my place. UPS trucks, there's clumps of mud also from when they pick up trashcans and do forths, so. My other thought is, is we pave this development, is there any sort of sweeping maintenance or cleaning of the mud off of? That's coming off of these garbage trucks and the UPS trucks, FedEx trucks, things like that. Just some of the things that I've seen and my thoughts are to ask you guys, is there anything as far as what would be done in maintenance of that term?
If it's paved, you would have less of that.
We, the wood, the mud doesn't come from our development, the mud comes from the garbage trucks coming from the north off of. The other areas. That's where, so it's not coming off of our, we have, our gravel road is. It's been bladed once since the development's been done and actually only Honey Lane's been bladed, Shaw Drive's never had a blade touched to it. As far as normal gravel maintenance, it's had a blade to it for snow, but it's never been graded. It gets eye maintenance, myself, Shaw Drive and some of Honey Lane. But Honey Lane for the first time this spring was touched with a county blade. And other than that, it so that road stays in very well shape, it it doesn't get muddy. So that that's where I guess some questions to you guys is with this thinking. I would rather if it's gonna be done, it's gonna be Shaw Drive and Honey Lane. I'm not gonna deny the fact, I don't think it's fair that then I would not get assessed and everybody else has to pay for that, I don't agree with that. I don't, I'm not a guy like that, I'm a fairness person and it should be done right person. So if it's gonna be done, I'd like to see it done a hundred percent and right, that we don't have to have problems, we don't have to do this again and. That it's done with the appropriate thicknesses for the loads that it's gonna see. If you got any questions for me, otherwise I'm glad to answer.
Mister Chairman, could I make a comment? Uh again, the the process, the the county and the highway or road department is basically. Accommodating a request that has come from your development. This isn't the county thing, we have to pave this now or anything like that. So you guys are in the driver's seat as far as the decisions you want to make in in your development. Pave it, not pave it, we could work with either or. So this is, this is something you and your neighbors are are uh deciding what to do here. So we're we're, we can't violate century code, so that's where we are, but. Uh again, it may be something that, you know. John said he'd be more than happy to try to work with the eyes on different different scenarios. Uh but it it still comes from lot owners, what you'd like to do.
And if you decide not to pave and you need more gravel, you would be especially assessed for that as well. We have, um John and Chad have figures up at the office as to to compare which um which, how much that would cost.
Yeah, the gravel's good, I mean, I mean, that I, but I do, you are right, we understand that as far as. I mean, we, there's been some stuff hauled on there, paid for by residents of the development already, so that's. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. One more call for any comments from online. And I'll do another call from comments from the audience. Okay, called three on both, seeing none, I will close the public hearing for Ensel's eleventh subdivision special assessment. Commissioners, comments?
Mister Chairman, a brief comment about any type of misleading in the uh petition. Or how the project was originally drawn up. Since I've been on this board, there was one other time that that occurred and it was immediately north of uh by Harmon Lake. And it was the same argument that there was uh. One or two property owners who didn't wanna sign the petition and that could have possibly killed the project and then the other part was. Basically fraudulent petition gathering. And this room got so to- toxic that we had to call the sheriff's department in to control all the neighbors. I don't know if Mister Copy remembers it, but he was still, he was state's attorney at the time, he was in the room. And the fraudulent language got thrown out so bad that it became criminal. And it was ugly. So that type of uh accusations over this project, cause we can only do this project as it is designed. And as it's presented, we cannot go into a future project, cause we don't know how that'll look. All I am saying is fraudulent type speech is criminal speech. And that can eventually lead to criminal charges. Because that's what was going to start happening at that hearing and it was bad. Bad enough that we had three sheriff's deputies called here to control the crowd. And I definitely don't wanna relive a meeting like that. So this project is about how it's presented and what all the state law has to be in uh. Enforced regarding this request. So Mister Chairman, I have a motion if you're ready. So, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion if you're ready.
I'm ready.
Mr. Chairman, moved to deny the pavement project for Ensel eleventh subdivision as one property owner who controls enough acreage to oppose the project is opposed, causing the project to fail to meet fifty percent, requiring the project to be denied under North Dakota Century Code forty dash twenty-two dash eighteen.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to deny the Ensel eleventh subdivision special assessment project. Won't try and reread the motion, if you could give that to Auditor Rone when we're done. Um, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Yeah, hang on, let's do a roll call. Commissioner Zachmeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Morrell.
Yes.
And myself would be a yes. A motion to deny passes. All right, John, we'll move forward with, uh, Ensel's second ninth through ninth subdivisions.
Yes, Ensel's second through ninth subdivision special assessment district. Um, we're looking at approval for a special assessment for hot mix bituminous overlay and patching on the roads in the Ensel seventh, or second through ninth subdivisions. Uh, the residents have submitted the required petition, required, uh, signatures to establish a special assessment district. This, uh, the resolution of necessity was approved and, uh, the public hearing is June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Notice of the hearing was published in the Mandan News thirty days prior to the public hearing and was published twice as required by North Dakota Century Code. The courtesy letter was sent to each residence and mailed May fifth, twenty twenty-five. In that letter, I explained the protest, uh, uh, process, so they could, um, either submit written protest or protest at the, uh, public hearing. I received two written protests. That accounts for one point seven percent of the area of this special assessment, a potential special assessment district. And as was m- mentioned in the previous, uh, it has to remain under fifty percent protest for it to proceed. So, uh, with that, I'd be open to any questions and we can go to the public hearing whenever you're ready.
Question? Commissioner Morrell, have any questions for John before I open it up?
He does not.
Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing at, uh, let's call the time here, six forty-three for the Ensel second through ninth subdivision special assessment. Are there any comments from the room? Any public comments from the room? Okay. Now come back to the room again, any comments online?
I have a comment online.
Okay, is it?
My name's Taylor Bolt, I live at thirty-six fifty-five Palomino Drive. And I did, I guess, I, more of a question, um, you know, my, my trip from Highway eighteen oh six to my house is pretty smooth, I know the road is old. But, uh, what warrants, um, repaving it other than it's old? I know there like are a few spots, but what would warrant, uh, not just repairing those spots versus repaving the entire, uh, subdivision?
Okay, one, uh, item is, we looked at, uh, patching quantities last year and Nate went out this year, so we could get it more accurate. And the quantities we measured were roughly double what they were last year. And the other example I can use is our, uh, Frontage Road, uh, one thirty-nine A, west of Mandan, out to the truck stop. When we, uh, started patching that, we could go back, in fact, we, the last two years before we overlaid that, patched it and overlaid it, we would patch it and within three months, the, where the, we had patched, had started breaking up and we would have to get a contractor with hot mix out there and continue to patch it. And those patches just kept expanding and expanding and expanding. And so if we don't do that now, we're just going to continue to see deterioration. If we go in and patch, next year at this time, we'll be looking at the edges of those patches, the asphalt's gonna be breaking up. Because the asphalt at twenty years, you guys have been very, very fortunate because a lot of asphalt doesn't last that long. And, uh, it's reached the end of its its life. So by patching it and overlaying it, you can get a lot more life out of it.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Okay.
Any further comments from online? Any more comments online? Okay, back into the room, I will call two more times, we've already called twice, is there any comments from the audience? Any comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing for Ensel's second through ninth subdivisions for the special assessment. Mr. Psyche?
Well, that is all I had as far as, um, just, we would, uh, I would have a motion for approval of this one.
Commissioners, have any questions, comments, or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the special assessment district for overlay with hot mix bituminous pavement. The roads in En- Ensel second through ninth subdivision, project number twenty-five eighty-six.
I'll second. All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the special assessment district for overlay with hot mix bituminous pavement. The roads in Ensel second through ninth subdivisions, just project number two-five eight-six. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Buckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash.
Yes.
Commissioner Morrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer.
Yes.
And myself is a yes, motion carries. Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you, and we will be doing this again at the July tenth meeting. We have two more public hearings for two more subdivisions.
Sounds good. All right, Don, I think we're gonna back up and go right down the order we had. Um, we skipped over the Eagle View presentation and we're gonna go back to that. Thank you all for attending.
Okay.
Cleared out.
I'll just do a quick introduction here and then I'm gonna turn it over, I have Dean Larson here from Eagle View. So he'll be doing a short presentation for you as well and answering any questions you might have. Um, so just to go back over the history of this project, in April of twenty twenty-four, we had Dean Larson here to present Eagle View. At that time, the Morton County Commission did request that this go out for an RFP. So in December of twenty twenty-four, we did issue an RFP. We sent it directly to four vendors we had identified as well as putting it up on the website. We only received one response to the RFP and that was Eagle View. So tonight, what I'm requesting from you is this, that you accept that bid. Um, this is not yet the decision to fund the project, that'll happen through the budget process. I'll be submitting the funding of it through my budget. Um, this will not only benefit the tax director office, but also the emergency management. The sheriff will be able to use it through the nine-one-one system. And it can become the base map for the Morton County parcel map that we put out there. So with that, um, I did include the bid in the packets for your reference. And I believe Dean also gave you, um, some promotional material. So unless there's any questions for me, I'll turn it over to Dean Larson.
Well, I lost all my audience.
Cleared them out.
Well, uh, my, my name is Dean Larson and, uh, thank you very, giving me the time, I thank you, the, the, the board here and the commissioners. Um, uh, you know what, it was really sort of eye-opening sitting here, listening and on all this because you had four or five different things that all had to do with land and land features and roads and and things like that. And what we do is we, we, we bring that to you, you know, we bring that visualization to you. So you can, and I was just, actually, when you guys were talking about it, I was like putting in Rose Lane or whatever it was. And I was like, oh, there, oh, there's the row, okay.
We should have put it up on the screen.
I, we could have easily done that, but and, but I, I'll show it here in not too long. But I, I'm gonna have to sit down though, cause I can't drive and stand at the same time here, so. So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna do this really quick, I know you, you guys, I think everybody here except for one person was here last time when I was here a couple of years ago. But so yeah, I'm, you're, you're, it'll be a little bit, but I just thought for the sake of everybody, I'd just do a quick little, little, uh, introduction to it and then I'll get into the software. Um, but we're, we're Eagle View and Pictometry, I've been with them for twenty-three years now. And, um, so it, we, I've seen a lot of things happen and, um, the, what we're be talking about is really, um, imagery, aerial imagery. And this is a, this is a straight down imagery that you would like, that you have, like, like from the, uh, your, the FSA or then the NESA, the saw, or the imagery, it's a straight down. And I always say, there's a lot more to a bridge than a bridge deck, there's a lot more to a house than just the roof. And that's why what we do is, in addition to this straight down, I usually ask, you know, that's, what do you think this is? But I think you guys already remember, if you don't, you don't, but, um, you, you, a lot of people say, I have no idea what that is. But and, but if you look at it from an angle, from a, that's the way we're used to, we're, we're always used to looking at things at an angle. We don't go walking around looking straight down, we like, we look at it angles, we see things in a three-dimensional, uh, uh, field. So when we have this, what we do is we take the straight down, uh, image and then we also, we take these planes going really low and slow and they go back and forth and back and forth. And they take a straight down ortho or orthogonal view, which is this top-down and then obliques being a forty-five degree angle from all four directions. So then, when we're done, we have this mapped over the entire county. And, uh, and you probably have about, oh, ten to fifteen images over every square foot of the entire county. So you, you really get a lot of information. We're very, we're very proud about our accuracy and our clarity and our delivery time is, is, I'll get into like some disaster things like, uh, a little bit later on here. Um, and, uh, but we also process everything here in the United States. Um, so we're talking about this, this is a, this is a straight down ortho. And everybody should recognize where we're sitting right now. And, and that is, but it's, once again, sometimes I can show you some people the top of their, top of their house and they have no idea what you're talking about. We show them the front of their house and then, then they'll say, oh, well, there's, there's the courthouse, okay, we, we already know what that is. So now, but now, it also gives us a lot of other information, where are the entrances, exits, where are the, uh, uh, you know, where are the, the sites and all your things that you can wa, you know, not only for, um, you know, for assessing, but also for, uh, you know, uh, public safety and, and planning and zoning. Um, there's a lot of different app, applications to it. So that's really about, really, the big thing about it is, the, who really uses it? Public safety, we already hook into your nine-one-one, we're already doing that right now. So they, when their call comes into your nine-one-one, they hit a button and then it brings up a, an image of where that phone call came from. So, and we already also, already integrate also with your Vanguard system, which is your KMA, KMA system and, uh, that they, that the accessory uses. We also integrate with everything that's Esri, Esri is like the big, big software provider that provide Arc Mac, Arc Map, Arc View, Arc Server, those type of things. We integrate with all of their stuff. So what, what I'm proposing right now is the, the visualization of being able to sit in the middle of everything you already have in there here at the county and be able to use it, uh, a little bit, well, with a lot better imagery. I'm not gonna get into a lot of these, but, um, so with it, with, big one is, like, once again, public safety, situational awareness, knowing what you're gonna get into before you get out there. And, uh, and it could be, I mean, we, I can tell you many stories where they, they, they looked at the imagery and they, they had a cloud, they, they had a uh, shed on fire out in the, on a, on a farm and they had a, a fuel tank that they couldn't see because of the, uh, uh, all the, all the smoke. Well, they looked at the imagery, they found out and they had, they, they had to, you know, adjust how they're gonna, you know, attack this fire. And that's just like countless, a number of things we, we can do in that, that. Nine-one-one, this is actually, uh, this is Zirker, which is actually also called, um, Central Square. There, um, that is what the, uh, your dispatch is using down right over here. Uh, so it, they hit, once again, hit a button, gives you that, gives you a, a, you know, a picture of where that phone call came from. I grew up in a farm in the middle of Minnesota and, uh, and we had three driveways. And if you didn't know and we just, you went up to the house, you're losing a lot of valuable time. I could say, oh, we're right down by the, the, the silo over here. And, and you gotta take the first driveways, you're coming from the north, there's something like that, they can have that, have that discussion with that dispatcher with, with the person who's making that call and it actually helps the caller feel a little bit more confident as well. This, we also have a disaster, uh, response program and we've flown every natural, uh, or nat- or natural disaster, we still flying them all the time. This is actually from last week, this is from, uh, there, remember, there was a great big forest fire just north of Duluth? And, uh, this image was the after and this was, was the before. So we, we can, we can actually turn some of this imagery over very, very quickly. Um, and get it into the hands of people that need it. And also, if you're, uh, sure, if you're probably familiar with like, like with FEMA, you sometimes have to like, you probably, you have to like, uh, uh, prove that a culvert was actually there that before was all washed out. Well, you can't really see that in, in, in a lot of the imagery, this imagery you can. Property assessment, this is a, a screenshot of, uh, uh, Vanguard's, this is what they use and, uh, and it fits right into that as well. So it gives you, uh, instead of like, looking at the top of a, a house, you're wondering, is that a two-car garage, a three-car garage? And, you know, it, it, it really answers a lot of questions. And I, and I, I've spoken to a lot of people, you know, if you, all of a sudden, you get back to the office from visiting, because you're still gonna have to visit the properties. But you can, um, you know, instead of driving all the way back out there, cause I think I got that measurement wrong, it's only thirty feet from, uh, uh, along or it's, it's really forty feet or whatever it might be. We can just make that quick measurement and I'll show you that in a little bit. And, uh, you're gonna be able to, um, save a lot of time and a lot of money. It's also part of the, uh, this is the IWO, which is the International Assessors Association. And what that they have, and they actually specifically state that they have a change, change detection, but also with, um, oblique and ortho imagery is, is, can, can be used for, uh, uh, desktop appraisal. The GIS, what we do is we, we, actually, we do a couple of different things. We take the imagery and we're done with it and we, we marry it with your LiDAR data. Or LiDAR data is your, your elevation data throughout the whole county. And then what we do is now, is we now have an X, Y, and a Z of every pixel on that image. So now we know a lot of other, of, of other information that you look, or that you know from just looking that's the top-down. And then we take out all your GIS information, we load it in here and now we put it up on the cloud and then we, uh, you can have it on any, any device that you want. The software that I'm showing you, that is, it's an unlimited user license. You guys decide, decide who gets those licenses, they have to be part of a local government. Um, or they can be a, um, in, uh, uh, let's say, a engineering company has a, has a, so something, he has a contract with an engineering company. And they could, uh, the city does, and then they, so they can give them access at that time. So you will, you would be able to choose how much you wanna be, you know, or who, who can actually use this technology. So this is what I'm gonna be showing here in just a little bit, this flower is Cloud Explorer, it's all, it's, you don't have to, so if you're at home and you have somebody calling you up and saying, hey, I wanna know about, what's the name of that lane again? Honey Lane, Honey Lane, and you, and you're, you're, you're sitting at home and saying, well, you know, I'm not really that familiar with that part. But I can, I can put it in my, 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 uh, my computer at home or on my phone or on my iPad or whatever you want. And you can say, well, here, I'm looking at your, uh, your property and I can measure it and I can see where the property lines are, I can see everything. Now I'm, now I'm, I'm speaking a little bit more, you know, knowingly of about, of, of whatever this, this constituent is asking about. Oops, I, uh, that, this is the, I'm not gonna be able to show this tonight, the mobile application, cause I don't have the right adapter. But, um, but this, this allows you to literally hold in your hand all your imagery, all your GIS layers in your palm of your hand, you drive along, you hit the little, up in the upper left-hand corner, you can see that little arrow, it goes right to where you're standing. And then now you can say, oh, who lives right over here? I hit the identify and then it'll tell me who, what the PIN number is, what the owner name is and what the physical. Hit the identify, and then it'll tell me what the PIN number is, what the owner name is, and what the physical address is, or whatever attribute you have in that parcel layer. So it's, the big thing is, is like, once again, you know, highway, planning and zoning, public safety, and of course, assessors are, but there's, there's applications for every department in your county. And this happens to be part of the ESRI integrations, this is one of the things, but, are there any questions so far?
Chairman?
Yes.
I do have one question, and we'll probably, may get into this later, but you talked about licensing, and I'm always thinking about value-added for the residents of Morton County. I understand licensing is unlimited for government officials and people in local government. Is there any opportunity, two questions, is there any opportunity for residents of Morton County to get their own subscription to the same data? Or, or say, limited-use data? That's one question.
Okay.
And, and then, what's the pluses and minuses of doing that?
Well, actually, there, yes, so you can put this on your public-facing, like, website, and, you know, your GIS website. And we've integrated with all, everything that you already have are up there already. And basically, what they would do is, they would be able to do a property search, just like they do it right now, and they would be able to see the straight down, this is a, are you seeing it right now? No, it isn't. We got it working too.
Maybe I shouldn't have asked the question.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'll jump in for Commissioner Tocash, but as Don had mentioned, currently, we have a lot of that in our GIS mapping, so if you were to pull up the county's GIS portal, click on parcels, and you could search every, every parcel within Morton County. There was a time when that was, that was shut down for obvious security concerns, but that imagery is out there, it's very one-dimensional, but it is out there.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Mr., or Commissioner Morrell, you know, we were talking about XYZ coordinates, and there's tremendous amount of usage, or use for that type of data. And, again, just questions about what would be available to a subscriber outside of, outside of local government for residents?
Well, it is true, you do have a lot of that information, what we're, well, once again, what we're bringing to the table is, A, a better visualization, a better imagery, because the imagery that you are using right now to make decisions and things like that is, is pretty bad. And it's not very, you can't see a lot of things. The, I'm gonna reboot my computer and see if that will. What, I did that.
We currently have the Morton County parcels, I don't know if you've ever been out there and looked at that, but if you go on Morton County, you go to the maps, and then you can go to parcels, there is imagery there. And around Mandan, that imagery is really, really good. The further out in the county you get, you get out to Flasher, you get to New Salem, you get to Glenall and Hebron, that imagery is not very good. The more you zoom in, it becomes very pixelated, it's hard to see anything. When you're zoomed way out, you can kinda see, but you can't zoom in and see any detail. So now, what they'll be providing to us, we can use their, what they're providing as the base map there. So instead of just pulling that imagery off ESRI, which is what we currently do today, we're just using publicly available imagery, we can now use Eagle View. Now, it will just be that straight down, you're not gonna be able to get the oblique imagery without going to the Eagle View software and having a license for that. But the straight down imagery, we can put out there, and all the citizens will be able to access that and see it. But it is just gonna be that straight down imagery that will be out there.
Thank you.
It's a shared question for Don.
Yes.
Pretty sure he knows the answer, but with our current parcel imagery, what's the zoom level on that? How many feet above grade? And then what would this provide for this system?
Um, since we're using what's publicly available, they're just pulling that off, the company is ESRI, they provide ArcMap and online, and that's the software we're using. And our GIS coordinator just uses their publicly available base maps. The, what's provided is, it varies, and as you zoom in, you would actually be switching times when that imagery was taken. So when you're out, you might be one year, and then as you zoom in, you're gonna be changing years, sometimes that might be in the past, sometimes it might be in the future. And then the quality of that imagery varies wildly, like I said, around Mandan, it's very, very good, it's almost as good as Eagle View. But the further out you go in the county, the less resolution you have, and the less usable that data is. And then the other problem we have in using that is, unlike when you go into Google Earth, Google Earth, when you're looking at imagery, will tell you the date that imagery was taken. We can't get that on the Morton County parcel map, we have no idea when it was taken. And we'll, we literally will be looking at newer subdivisions, and when you're out, they're all empty lots. As you zoom in, all of a sudden, the houses will pop in, but not all of them, because you're now, you're switching time periods on that imagery. So with Eagle View, we would know exactly when that imagery was taken, it'll be consistent across the entire county. And as you're zooming in or zooming out, you're not switching time periods. And that quality of imagery will be consistent across the entire county. Now, Mandan flies at a little better resolution than what we'd be talking in the county act. So when you still get around the area of Mandan, you're gonna have a lot better imagery, but the county will be pretty close. We're, we're talking about probably going with a six-inch, they have bids in there for six-inch and three-inch. We would be going probably with a six-inch, Mandan currently is doing three-inch, and they're in negotiations with Eagle View to switch that to one-inch. So they would be a lot better, but the six-inch is gonna be way better than what we have in the county, other than, like I said, right around the city of Mandan, where that's gonna be a little better imagery. But we can still access, when Mandan's flying, that's available in our software as well. So we get, if they go one inch, we get that one inch as far out as Mandan flies, and they fly the ETZ. So we get, when you get to one of those, and you're in the county, but it's in the ETZ, you would get that one-inch imagery, if Mandan does that. Does that answer your question, Ray? I don't have the technical specifications of what's available, because it's just whatever's publicly available from ESRI.
Yeah, it's, it varies, but that does, yes, thank you. Follow-on, though, is, how often would they update the imagery? Is it annually, is it?
It all depends on what the contract, I have some counties that do it every year, some counties that every other year, and I have other counties that do it every three years, which is probably the more common thing for more of the rural counties. So they would, they would, but that would be a whole new contract and so forth, so to do another flight. But now, where I grew up, it's very rural, and like back in two thousand eighteen, when you had a little bit of recession, I mean, they pushed it out for, for five years, which is just fine. And, but it all depends where you get your bang for your buck.
We would be proposing a three-year, so they would fly once every three years, that's currently what Mandan is doing. Mandan is scheduled for their next flight next year. If we were to fund this and go forward with it, we would be coinciding with Mandan, and saving a little bit of equipment costs with Eagle View. What's in there for the bid, I think it's around a hundred and eighty thousand for the six-inch, I don't have it in front of me. But Eagle View would allow that to be paid over the three years, so we would only be paying sixty thousand a year for three years, and then we would pay for the next flight after those three years are completed.
There's no yearly maintenance or anything?
Not beyond the sixty thousand, Ray.
No, there is no, the, that, the total you see there, that's all-encompassing. There's, we, we host all the imagery, we serve it up, we give you the software, we give you training, it's all the, you know, it's, it's everything, there's no surprises.
I did read something in there where there was a onsite server, or is this cloud-based?
This is cloud-based, but however, you, we would still ship you a drive with all the orthos on it. And then you would keep that forever and ever, so you'd have, you know, for historical purposes, so. So it's all online, but then, and we also serve it up online for the orthos and the obliques. So it doesn't cost you any more for your, your IT infrastructure.
Just didn't get the actual software.
Another question, if I may?
Yes.
So in the event of, let's say there's a large-scale disaster, and obviously knowing that FEMA, if it individual assistance, so on and so on, looking at destroyed, major damage, other classifications for justification of a declaration. If that were to come into play, is there the opportunity to command a flight? And if so, what would we look at for turnaround or for potential costs?
Well, there are, there are certain levels that have to be met to make it a free flight. Like, it has to be an EF4, if it's really the only one that really pertains to us as a tornado. I mean, we do this with hurricanes and earthquakes and everything else, but, and, and fires and blowdown and flooding. So we, you know, so what we do is, if, if, the only one that really pertains for a free flight, it would be an EF4, EF4 tornado, or, or worse. And then we fly the affected area at no cost. Now, right now, we just had a bunch of tornadoes in Minnesota, and there, they were EF2s and 3s, so they, but they still wanna have a flight, so then we gave them, you know, a very, very discounted price for their, their square mileage that they wanted to have covered.
And again, you're only looking at the affected area.
Yep, correct, this is just the affected area, and the timing, well, like I said, this, this one, the one that you maybe hopefully saw on the PowerPoint, the Duluth one, just north of Duluth, I mean, that was like, it was flown eight days ago, and, and now they already, they've already had it in their hands for three days. So it's a really fast turnaround. Otherwise, traditionally, when we fly, when we are flying a county, what we do is, we upload all the imagery in, in about ten days as, as it's being flown. And then we come back, and then it's lightly QC'd, and then we go, come back, bring everything down, QC everything, and then we usually have it out the door and have the, the hard drive and everything online in about thirty days. I think our contract's a sixty, but being as far north as you guys are right now, we're, that's the end of our season, so we're, we're able, I mean, I've seen everything from twenty to, well, fifteen to twenty days, it's happening now, but it's probably closer to thirty usually. Still nothing. Oh, well, yes, okay, yeah, so then, the other thing is too, you just asked about the, the timing of the flight. What we do is, we also, we time this, we do it leaf-off, snow gone and leaf-off, because we wanna be able to see, you know, the structures and the, and the pavement, everything down below it. And a lot of what you're, what the FSA photos, they're all, you know, full leaf on and things like that, so blocks a lot of things, you can't really see. And so it's a little bit more, well, it's a lot more valuable. The other one thing too, now, this is really high, it keeps sounding beeping at me, I'm wondering, oh, okay. The other thing too, is that even though it's really high resolution, really good stuff, you can't see in any windows, you can't, you can't read license plates, you, you can't, if you find a person, which is actually somewhat sort of weirdly difficult, you can't really, there's a lot, we always fly in this on beautiful spring days, and there's hardly anybody outside. But if you do find a person, you can't tell if it's a man or a woman. So it isn't about Big Brother, it's all about, okay, we wanna have parcels and pieces of land, or structures and bridges, and, and, you know, your, your public works or electric, you know, they can see what's on the pole out there, hanging on the poles, so. That is so sad. It was working. I should have brought up that. But if you wanna see more, I can come up there and show you, but it's getting late.
That's somebody really wants you to. I think Paul's the one, were you here when the first presentation was made?
No.
Yeah, Paul's our newbie on here, so he's the one that hasn't seen it. Commissioner Tocash is the one that hasn't seen your program. He's the new one on the board, so.
And, and that's, and that's fine, I do have some experience with satellite-based data and, and what we're using in a mining environment, so. But it's, you know, there we needed, we didn't need forty-five-degree angles at, at, at locations, but we did need all of the XYZ data, and, and at very closely spaced intervals. So we were getting data, I believe, every two weeks.
And that's one of the big things with Eagle View that you can do that we can't do with any of our current software is height. So you can actually measure the height of structures, and in a lot of cases, in our software, height is taken into account for the pricing. So getting that height rate on shops, churches, if we assess those, they're exempt, but we still wanna get an assessment on the books. You have to measure the height of their seapools in order to do that assessment, so this software would allow us to do that. You can't always do that with a laser measurer on-site, sometimes you can't get that height. So this would allow us to double-check that or measure it.
And for a lot of the, you know, like, public works and stuff, things like that, you know, the slope, being able to, you know, put a, you know, point here and point here, it tells you how, what the distance is, what the difference in elevation is, and what, you know, what the slope is, and it, and it's a really quick, easy way of, you know, finding out the lay of the land, literally.
And as a six-inch subscription, it would be vertical and horizontal, six-inch or better accuracy, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, well, it's different from accuracy from.
Six-inch means it's, it's, that's the resolution of the image rather than the accuracy. The accuracy, like, when you're measuring things from point A, you know, from point A to B, it's actually ninety-nine percent accurate. The one percent inaccuracy is a, is user error, they're grabbing the wrong pixel, so if they zoomed in, whatever, but they get even closer than that. But, so it's, it's very accurate as far as being able to measure things, I mean, I was gonna show you, and I can do a football field, and it comes up to, you know, three hundred point zero one feet, so it's pretty, it's very accurate.
So again, the ask tonight is just that you accept Eagle View as the successful bidder. This is not yet a decision on the funding that will happen during the budget process.
You have a bid, but you didn't get funded yet.
Basically, is where we're at, we have one bidder, and this is it, we didn't get any other ones. So there was no real scoring or anything that went on, Eagle View was the only bidder.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners Two, Don and I discussed this, your likely users are going to be, of course, the Tax Assessor's Office. Mr. Chair, Commissioners Two, Don and I discussed this. Your, your likely users are going to be, of course, the Tax Assessor's Office, Emergency Management in our Sheriff's Department in the event of, uh, of a need.
Even roads?
In roads, yes. Yep.
Could actually spread that cost out quite a ways, department-wise. Commissioners, have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, is this the same program that Mandan is using?
Yes. Eagle View is the same one.
Do they have all the, do they have anything extra that this one isn't covering? Or is this one, this version better than what Mandan is using?
Uh, the version isn't any different as far as the software goes. The only difference is we would be proposing six inch where Mandan is currently doing three inch. And is looking to go to one inch. That's just that quality of image you get as you zoom in. You won't get that pixelation as quickly as you go up there. But the six inch will be better than everything we have other than what's right around Mandan, which is already at that resolution.
Get popped up and went away is just as fast.
Oh, the moment you switch it, dumps.
How much would, uh, Mr. Chairman, how much would this bid increase if we went to the one inch?
That's a simple answer, just a lot.
It's a lot, uh.
Well, you can tell between the six and the three.
In the, in the bid is the, both the six inch and the three inch costs. Um, there's a page for both. The, I think the three inch goes up to, it's a little over two hundred thousand from the hundred and eighty.
About two forty.
Generally, what we usually do is we usually do six inch over the county, over the rural areas and do three inch over the city.
This is six inch?
Yes, because if you go down just a couple lengths, that's far. Uh, right there, it's a, you know, three six inch. And then the other one's the three inch, about two hundred and eighty. What is it, fifty?
Two fifty-eight.
Two thirty-eight.
Two thirty-eight.
So we're better off going to that then?
You go up twenty, forty, about sixty thousand.
Mr. Chairman, one more question?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Fore, a few, uh, you know, we know the cost and we know kind of what we're getting, but is there anything else you want to add to the record as far as what a value proposition this would be for the county? Uh, how we plan on using it, uh, where would it save money by doing this? Or other, other, uh, value statements that you'd care to make at this point?
Um, for, tax department's probably going to get the most use out of it. Um, as Dean said, this doesn't necessarily negate going out there and doing a site visit. Um, but there's some homeowners that don't want us on their property. And when they've got a long driveway and they are over a hill, you can't get anything from the public road. So right now, all we would have available to us would be Google Earth and the Morton County map to do the measurements. And when you can't see those oblique images, it's hard to tell where house stops and garage begins, if there's an attached garage. Um, so that becomes very difficult to do that assessment. We, we would always do the best we can with whatever's available to us. Um, but having Eagle View would allow us to capture those properties a lot more accurately. It would allow us to do measurements back at the office instead of doing all those on-site. Um, especially like I said, the height, the, the length, the width, those types of things. Um, and it would allow us to see what we're getting into when we're going out to a property. We can look on Eagle View, see those buildings, um, see what is there and then make a game plan. So when we get there, we can be efficient, get things done and get out of there. Um, and then if homeowners don't, even if we can see it from the public road, if homeowners don't want us on there, we can still use the Eagle View to get around the backside. Because a lot of times if you can't see the house, you only get the front side and the deck and stuff is on the backside. So Eagle View would allow us to see that backside. So just, it, it would save us some time because we would be able to do some stuff back in the office. Um, and we would be a lot more accurate with what we can get if we can actually do a walkthrough of the property.
And I would say that, also that the, um, a- all the other counties that have Eagle View in North Dakota, they do fly every three years. Now, Bismarck just flew every two years, but, uh, but, so I think it really speaks well for getting their bang for the buck. Because they're really getting a lot of value out of that, uh, out of that imagery.
Well, and to me, with flying the county every three years, you don't have the change in the county that you do in Mandan. So if Mandan's flying every two years or three years, that's where your biggest changes are going to happen anyway. But I can see emergency management using this quite heavily too. Heidi's back, I know Patrick's not here tonight, but Heidi's back there nodding. This is something that would be very helpful or beneficial to them too.
And one of the services Eagle View offers when you do that second flight, now it's an extra cost, but they do what's called a change detector. So they can compare those two images from three years ago. And they can tell you, hey, something changed on this property, you need to go take a look at it. Might have added a deck, might have added an addition to the house, garage.
Garage.
Whatever it is, they, but they would just flag it and say, hey, something changed, go look. But again, that, that would be an extra service. Um, and you can't do it till you get a second flight, so we're not talking about that right now. But when we do that second flight, that might be something we might consider. Mandan's not currently doing that, but they're strongly looking at it. They just haven't decided where they want to spend their money at.
Any further questions for either gentleman? You need a motion to accept the bid? How do you want to?
That's my request, is that you do a motion to accept Eagle View as a successful bidder. And if we decide to fund it and move forward, we would work out the contract with them at that time.
That makes sense. Okay. So the discussion's going to come back up when it comes budget time?
Excuse me?
It's, the discussion will come back up at budget time again.
Right. The timing of this was designed for that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to accept the bid from, uh, Eagle View for this project.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to accept Eagle View as the successful bidder for the, or orthographic imagery project. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Sorry, Ray. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving right on down the agenda. Uh, Morton County Park Board appointments.
So we have three positions that are expiring and the three current board members, um, have submitted applications. And that's Randy Grainer, Ken Geiger, and Jamie Wetch. And these are three-year terms expiring six thirty of twenty-eight.
Should be able to move them all at the same time, same timeframe, uh, term too, right? Do them all at once.
Yeah, one motion, yes.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the appointment of Randy Grainer, Ken Geiger, and Jamie Wetch for three-year terms. Morton County Park, Park Board term expiring of...
And then we have the Special Assessment Committee, which is Lynn Kinischitzky is currently on that. And he has said he would stay on there and that is, um, a six-year term expiring six thirty of thirty-one.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Lynn Kinischitzky to the Morton County Special Assessment Committee with a six-year term expiring six thirty of twenty thirty-one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Lynn Kinischitzky to Morton County Special Assessment Committee for a six-year term expiring six thirty of twenty thirty-one. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. You have to go? Okay, it's on note, we'll get it. Uh, next we have Commissioner Zach Myron Buckley with the Flight Policy Revision.
Andy must have looked at it. I didn't know anything about it till I looked at the packet.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, there's, uh, two recommended changes. One would be, uh, adding the 4H and Future Farmers of America language. And then the other one is cleaning up a language where, uh, when it talks about displays of the US flag, it removes, uh, other Morton County-approved flag or pennants. And it's just, and that's just to clean up the language there too, so it's a language cleanup.
Yeah, you, the, the only thing that is different is that the 4H week is the same time as fire. Um, the National 4H Week is the same time as the, um...
Fireman.
Firemen. And so that was the only thing that we really needed to work out on how we were going to do that. I had visited with Chief Bits and he was okay to rotate it every other year. Um, I did check with, um, NDSU and the National 4H Week is adopted by, um, the Secretary of Agriculture. Um, and then of course it's proclaimed by the President usually as well.
First week?
First week of October.
First full week.
Well, it depends. Sometimes it varies.
I was going to say, because if it's the first full week, it could start on a Monday and go through, and this one goes, firefighters is the weekend of the first Sunday through the following Friday. So that could be, actually end up being the second week.
Yeah.
So, just depends on how that's worded there. Well, this is policy, it can be adjusted and changed as we go too. There can be revision made. So, um, any other comments or questions on the flag policy? Or, however we want to move forward with that.
Because in twenty-four, it was October seventh through the twelfth.
It was 4H. Yeah, see, they could...
They might not always be on the same week.
We can alternate them.
This next year, in twenty twenty-five, it's October fifth through the eleventh.
That's the first Sunday through, I betcha.
So it's the first Sunday...
Through.
Through the second Sunday.
All right. We can...
We can work it out, it's okay.
Mr. Chairman, is there any, uh, additions to this as presented?
I don't have any. Commissioner Morrell, you're online. Do you have any additions to the flag policy as presented? Okay.
I do not.
I guess I do have one question. I don't know, um, why is Father's Day on there and Mother's Day?
Because it's, uh, came out of flag code.
Okay.
And I believe it was Commissioner Morrell that found those in a flag code.
Okay. I just, I just was wondering.
I fly mine on, I fly mine at home on those days anyway.
Mine's always...
Unless the wind or the weather's bad, so.
Mine's up all the time too.
We just fly it when you can. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if, uh, Commissioner Morrell can hear, but, uh, he, I believe he was the one that found that in a newer flag code than what I had access to.
Title fourteen, US Flag Code, um, just depends which version you grab, it's going to be more complete than the other.
So there's an, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, one more time. So there's a Navy Day, but there isn't an Army Day? It's Armed Forces Day?
There's Armed Forces Day. The Army has a birthday. Each of the branches of service have designated birthdays, but again, this is just what is identified in flag code.
Okay. Because I guess I'm just wondering why we're singling out or singling in...
Yeah.
Certain branches.
I question the exact same, because I'm not a Navy person, I'm a Marine.
We know that.
But again, it's, it's just what they have identified in flag code and flag code is, uh, directed by Congress.
Go ahead, Andy.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the flag policy as presented.
Second.
It's been moved to accept the flag policy revision as presented. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, Commissioner Morrell, you're up.
Would the Architects Al Fitterer and Jake Axman be in the audience by chance?
They are.
Okay, I will, as they get situated, I will, uh, introduce. Uh, but basically, starting back in December when this commission identified the Morton County War Dead Committee, that committee has been working very diligently and with the support and very attentive interpretation of our architects, we come back with a final concept. Uh, Commissioners, if you might remember, the original concept, that was presented was a zigzag concept as well as an elliptical. The general consensus through the survey as well as through the commission was to direct the, the War Dead Monument Committee to focus on the elliptical. And when you see this presentation, you see that, um, the original concept of the ellipt, the elliptical has expanded. And, uh, through the course of dialogue, discussion, interpretations, uh, the, the War Dead Monument Committee is very pleased, very satisfied. They, they like what has been presented. So with that, I will let Architects Al Fitterer and Jake Axman give the presentation on this proposed final concept and I'll follow up after that.
Good evening, Chairman Beam and Commissioners. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing us to work with Commissioner Morrell and Commissioner Zach Myer on the Veterans Plaza. They and the committee that, uh, was, uh, formed were, gave us excellent input and... They and the committee that was formed were, gave us excellent input and direction in this project, and so, they were, they made our job very easy. So, I think they should be commended for the dedication they had to this project. And so, my voice in my throat is not doing well tonight, so Mr. Axman is going to go through the project with you and describe the outcome. Jake?
Thanks, Al. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I want to echo the gratitude that Al shared, especially towards the committee that was involved in this process. Nikki's here tonight, and many others, I'm sure, are watching online. So, thank you so much for your input. Again, what we're showing you tonight, the finished product, the finished renderings, would not have been possible without the input from that committee and their hard work. So, thank you again. So, do we have a copy of the presentation available?
Just, we have pictures.
The pictures. Okay. Give me one second. I apologize. Commissioner Morell, do you have the PowerPoint presentation that you could share by chance?
I would have to dig for it, but if any of the commissioners, I know there's an extra one in my packet, because I have a hard copy with me on the road. So, if you want to grab that and use that on the screen.
Oh, sure. Yeah, we could do that. Yeah, you bet.
I apologize for the crease on those that fall into fit in the packet.
Yeah, this works quite well. So, the image that you're looking at in this first rendering is from Second Avenue looking back towards the courthouse entrance. The main courthouse entrance is on the left-hand side of your screen, and this is, again, the final product of the design efforts of the committee and ourselves as the design team. So, some of the major changes that we've made in the design of the plaza is taking full advantage of the space available in the plaza. If you think about the current War Dead Monument that is there currently, it's a wall that's pretty close to the main entrance of the courthouse. So, what we've done is deviated from that, and we've pushed the wall. You can see it on the right-hand side. There's a series of three walls that are shown on the right-hand side, kind of lit up with the lights. And what that has allowed us to do is take full advantage of the space provided in the plaza space. So, this becomes more of a community gathering location where we can have a Memorial Day celebration, a Veterans Day celebration. This can be kind of a beacon for the community. Central to the screen in the rendering is a saluting soldier silhouette, so that is a light effect. And in front of that is the Combat Cross. And then, if we move a little bit forward, staying center to the screen, there is a bronze inlay of the Morton County seal, the seal of Morton County, surrounded by the six military branches. Each one of those seals is included as well. The American flag is also moved out closer to Second Avenue. That was something the committee felt really strongly about. We need to get that flag away from the building, make it more prominent, a little bit more front and center within the plaza space. And then, on the lower-left-hand side is a monument sign of the plaza. The committee went through a pretty robust input process determining the name of the plaza, and the name that they came up with was the Morton County Memorial Plaza. Near the front entrance, and we'll show some additional renderings of that, is the several plaques for the Medal of Honor recipients as well. So, that would sort of flank the entrance into the courthouse.
Where were those going?
They don't show up real well in this image. I'm gonna, I'll see, if I can point to it a little bit here.
Okay.
Before you change it, is the flag pole able to hold more than one flag?
Great question. So, this is a concept. I think those details could be worked out, but I think that's the intention, yeah, is that it would be able to hold several flags. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet. So, we'll show some additional...
Yeah, they're right back by the entrance door in there, aren't they?
Yes, right there. They're kind of hidden. This is another image. You can see, again, the main entrance into the courthouse is off on the left-hand side. The memorial walls are, there's an assembly of three walls that are shown. The central wall and the largest wall is the name containing all of the, or the wall containing all of the names of the war dead. And then, the two flanking walls would be inspirational military-related quotes. And again, the committee has worked diligently on coming up with a list of quotes that could be included on those walls. And so, we've gone through quite a bit of dialogue about the height of that wall, the middle wall. We want that to be a little bit higher than the two flanking walls. And we also started conversations about how much real estate do we need for, how much room do we need on the wall for all of those names? And what we found is in the concept that you're seeing, we're basically already filling up one whole side of that wall with the names that currently exist. But then, we also have room on the backside of that wall to add additional names if that were necessary down the road. We hope that's not necessary, but we want to make that provision. You can see, again, center to the screen, that bronze inlay, again, that we talked about earlier, the Morton County seals central to that, and then, the seals of the six military branches around the perimeter. In the background, the Combat Cross is on the forefront, or I guess in the background there. And then, we are imagining a blank limestone wall. The limestone would match the existing facade on the courthouse building. And then, we went through a lot of conversations, and the committee was really interested in light and shadow, having the space be very dynamic and changing at different times of the day. So, if you come here during the day, it may feel different than if you come here in the evening. And one of the ideas that emerged from the committee is, in the evenings, this saluting soldier would emerge on that blank wall, kind of saluting those that gave the ultimate sacrifice for this country. And I think that is a really powerful statement, a really powerful concept to bring forth. And I think the other thing that it does is it brings people into the plaza space, especially in the evening hours. You think about our long winters. It might draw people into this plaza space from the street that may not ordinarily come into this space. They see that shadow on the wall, and they say, "What's this all about? I'd like to learn more about what this space is all about." And then, there's obviously a very important message when they walk into this space. Again, on the left-hand side, kind of hidden is those Medal of Honor recipient plaques. And we have some more renderings. This is showing on the backside of the memorial wall. That would a, we want the wall to be fully interactive, so you can walk on one side or the other side, and there's things to interact with and read about on both sides of the wall. We're trying to avoid blank walls so that this is fully immersive. And so, again, on that right-hand side, you see one of those inspirational military quote walls, and then, that central wall, again, would be for the names of those that have fallen. We've also included benches, an assembly of benches on the southwest and northeast corners of the plaza space. You can see that on the lower-right-hand side. And then, that saluting soldier is in the background again. Oh, I should mention one little detail here, and this is maybe an important detail, is we talked about, we were trying to explore what was the meaning of the original zigzag wall. We don't know for sure the reason for that shape. I think there was some discussion about, potentially, some theories about that, and Commissioner Zachmeyer might speak to that. But we wanted to pay homage to that original shape, and we did that subtly here. You can see that zigzag shape that emerges in the paver pattern. It's a herringbone pattern. So, as we continue to refine the design of this thing, those little details will start to come out and bring more meaning to the plaza. So, we want to be real intentional about those little design details. It's really gonna make this place incredibly special. This is another view. I think what we want to point out in this image is maybe two specific items. On the lower-right-hand side are the existing Ten Commandments plaque. We have not touched that in this concept. It's our intention to leave that where it is and leave that lie. And then, in the foreground here, you see that raised planting bed. It's our understanding that some of the 4-H clubs and some of the local community organizations plant those flower beds, and I think that adds a lot of vibrancy to the space, and you have community buy-in. But the other thing that's important about this raised planting bed is we want to think about what we call perimeter hardening, so increasing the security of this space. So, we've added a raised concrete bed along with some light ballards, and what that does is it prevents vehicles from driving into this space and adds that layer of security. And we tried to do that creatively and subtly, so you wouldn't know that it's a wall, but, so it's sort of dual purpose, I would say.
So, Jake? It looks like you guys cleaned up the Ten Commandments. I don't know if they're...
Yes. Yeah, we're proposing a little wax and polish.
Brightened it up a little bit. It really looks good on here.
This is just another view looking back towards the plaza space. You will see, there's a drop box there. I believe that's for ballot drop-offs and various things. That's pretty important to the functionality of the courthouse, and we wanted to find a spot for that as well that felt pretty intentional to the overall design. And then, you can see that monument sign. Again, the monument sign is also contributing to that perimeter hardening that we talked about, again, that security portion of the design. I think this is perhaps my favorite angle out of all the renderings that we've provided. It really provides a nice, clear overview of what we're doing here. So, you can see that elongated elliptical shape is really taking full advantage of the space provided in the plaza. And I really like the fact that, as a landscape architect, I'm thinking about microclimate. How does it feel to be in this space at different times of the day and different seasons? And the seating area that we have on the upper-right-hand side of the screen is actually gonna get a lot of shade during the summer months, but then, the seating area on the left-hand side of the screen will get a lot of sun in those summer months. And then, we did whatever we could. We're gonna really be intentional and try to preserve that existing honey locust tree that's out there. It's a really beautiful specimen. We're gonna try to do whatever we can to save that. I think it adds to the microclimate and the feel of the space. So, the other thing that we were, I'll point out on this rendering is real thoughtfulness around geometry. So, the primary entrance, if you draw an access from that saluting soldier through the bronze inlay and the pavers, all that aligns with the primary entrance into the plaza space. And then, so as you're walking through that space, you might imagine you walk over the top of that bronze inlay before you turn left to go into the courthouse, and you walk past those Medal of Honor recipients. So, what we're trying to do is create a really immersive experience for people coming and going from the courthouse to know fully what we're talking about. This is a memorial courthouse, and this is in honor of those that gave the ultimate sacrifice. So, there's a lot of military symbolism here, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, obviously. A lot of effort went into this, and a lot of thought went into this as well, so. So, just another axonometric view of the plaza. I don't have anything specific to point out to this, but I think this might be a good spot to finish the presentation and see if there are any specific questions you had about the design, or if Commissioners Zachmeyer or Morell wanted to add anything that I may have missed. I'd love to hear your thoughts as well.
We'll have to shut the overhead off. So that Commissioner Morell can speak.
No, it's good.
There it went.
It's good.
There we go. Commissioner Zachmeyer, Commissioner Morell, have any comments or questions from either of our other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, the, this concept is by far definitely won me over, and I think it, the whole committee. From the original elliptical, the elliptical changed, and everything is symmetrical. And when I look at this design, you know, the whole time doing this, I was thinking of the Vietnam War Memorial in Washington, DC, and the whole memorial is laid out symmetrical to the surrounding area. And when the elliptical was moved to this, it is symmetrical to this entire space. The symbolism is strong across the board. I was a big supporter of trying to preserve the zigzag. And at one of the meetings, it was discussed that the zigzag, to finish the current monument, was paid for by World War I veterans. All of them are gone. But that zigzag was meant to not only have a solid wall to walk on both sides, to add more names in the future, but it was also to represent the trenches of World War I. So, having the zigzags into the concrete is a reminder, basically, of World War I, and trenches that were during trench warfare during that conflict. It's symmetrical. There has been no negative comments at the various public meetings we've had, and I can't think of a better design any further than this one.
We all started out with the first couple of designs, looking at the elliptical as what we all thought kind of was our favorite, and it's changed, but it's changed for the better. Just adjusted, so. Commissioner Morell? Can't hear you. You're flapping your gums. Try it now.
Nope.
Can you hear us? I can hear you. We can't hear you.
Mr. Chairman, this would now, this is basically the concept, or is the concept that is being agreed upon with the subcommittee. I believe we're at the point now that we need to approve the concept and then start doing fundraising. I believe, unless Commissioner Morell would have objection, that, or if anybody on the commission would like to have a formal public hearing at this level to pick this design. But we need to pick this design. We need to solidify it, or at least this concept, so we can start fundraising, so that we can start taking this out and fundraise. And then, you know, by that fundraising, we can also determine timeline... And then, you know, by that fundraising, we can also determine timeline of how much donations we need to move to the next phase. One of the things in visiting with courthouse maintenance, you're not going to want to drive heavy equipment over the top of this anymore. So, to avoid the snow buildup and the ice, we're going to have to probably underground heat it. So, probably looking at a million-dollar project altogether, maybe even more as costs go up. But, either way, there's plenty of veterans groups. There's plenty of opportunities for fundraising, but you got to have something to show the people how the money is going to be spent. So, I don't know what the other members would agree, or if Commissioner Morrell has a different thought. But, if the commissioners think that this is the concept to go for to start the fundraising, then we can approve it tonight. If the commission wants to have a public hearing at this level, because it's only a subcommittee at the lower level, then it's about setting a public hearing for public input on the final design or the final concept. Would that be about right for the architects?
I would agree with that. I would say we have had quite a bit of input thus far in the process, and I think for a concept, I personally feel like this is enough information to fundraise and keep the process going.
Well, and you've had a public hearing, not a public meeting, in each city?
Yeah. We've had meetings in, I believe, three cities.
I know New Salem, Flasher. Did you hit Glen Olin?
I think it's Hebron. Hebron.
It's Hebron?
Racing. It's been four cities, yeah.
Commissioner Morrell has indicated four.
Yep.
So, four of the five. Did you hit Almont? Yeah, New Salem, Almont. Okay. So, just my opinion, we've had a possibility to put your input in across the whole county. We really have. We've had numerous meetings here that have always been put out there for anybody to come, so I don't know. Just my opinion that we need another public hearing. I think, to me, moving forward would be the right thing to do. He's still talking, but nobody can hear you.
We can't read it, so what does it say, Heidi?
How will this project affect security once they break ground? Based on this design, at some point, the main door will have to be shut down.
There's two. I was looking at that same thing, and you could possibly be working on one side and coming along the wall where the grass is for a time being before you put in that. And once you get more done on this side to put that grass in, you could come through. But, yeah, there might be some issues with a little bit of security for some days.
Mr. Chairman, there was a time when we had to close the main entrance for something, and then we reopened the social service entrance.
Just for a time being?
Yep.
The biggest thing is the X-ray machine.
The Sheriff Kurt Meyer had it. It isn't as quite as efficient, but...
It works.
It works.
Yeah.
The only thing is Commissioner Zach Meyer is that's -- it's not totally open on that end anymore. You know what I mean?
We do.
We don't.
Or it's go to the north entrance, but that, I think, is going to end up being a sheriff's call. Totally his call. Because it's about security of entering the building.
Yep.
He would have to open whichever door he feels is necessary to accommodate everything.
Another comment. As much as I'd like to move on, and I commend Commissioner Morrell and Commissioner Zach Meyer, the architects, and the committees that have worked on this and all the input they've put into it. This is an amazing design from my point of view. It's significantly better than the first renditions, and as much as I'd like to move on in this, and I think we could still start fundraising, but, and I don't want to hold it up with public meeting or public hearings, but at the same time, there may be some things that we've missed, and security is one of them. It would have to be a pretty robust reason to change this, I believe. But, I don't know if there's a -- I don't know what else could have possibly been overlooked. There has been plenty of opportunities. That comment was made. Plenty of opportunities for people to weigh in on it.
And I think they're talking about during the construction phase only, as far as security goes.
Okay. Only during, okay.
I think that's what I'm... Yep.
Okay.
During the construction phase would be, how are you going to get people through that door?
Okay.
And there might be a timeframe where we might have to move away from there for a week or two weeks or something, and then get back to it again.
Okay.
I believe that was the way I read that comment.
I see Commissioner Morrell nodding and said yes, so.
Well, this was only -- if the security concerns were only due to construction, then I'd be ready to move on with this.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the sheriff's seen these, and the general security has been addressed to the best of my knowledge, unless there's something I missed.
I believe it's just during construction.
Yeah.
That's going to be the issue. And that can be worked out through contractors.
You can create a walkway, you know, to one side and not work there. You can move back and forth. Things can be... In fact, they close off part of Main Street just to put in a sidewalk for a while.
Basically doing something like that to limit the time of closure.
And the comment up there now is, I was reading it right, is what he says, so. Ray says, "Turn my mic on." You're not muted. Ray, you're not muted on this end. Now you are. Now you're not. There's some comments that could be made here, but we won't. We'll spare you.
Only thing I can think about is if he would go back out and come back.
Yeah, but even then, so. We've had several glitches with our technology this evening, so. If you can hear me, Ray, maybe if you leave the meeting and come back and try that one time. There, he's gone. We'll give him a second, see if he comes back on. If it changes anything. You know what? Let's, well, no, I want him on for this too, because he's very important.
Yeah, I hear some background noise.
Are you there?
There you are.
Okay. Awesome. Okay, so if I may reiterate a couple of things. First off, as mentioned, I do really want to acknowledge who the committee members are. Stacy Bendish from Mandan and Four Ice area. Stacy is a Navy veteran. Nicole Frelick, who I believe is sitting in the audience. Nicole is a U.S. Army veteran. She is from the Mandan area, but also has touches Judson and the New Salem area. Glenn Reed is a Marine Corps veteran, lives in Mandan. Gary Goroski, Navy veteran, lives in Mandan. Scott Stevens, Army veteran, has connections in Mandan and the Flasher area. Todd Porter, who has, lives in the Mandan area, civilian. Larry McClellan, U.S. Army, lives in the Mandan area. Of course, Commissioner Zach Meyer, and then myself as a Marine Corps veteran. And also acknowledge Wendy Bent, who's served as, very diligently, is our recording secretary, who also is a Marine Corps veteran. Of this crew, Stacy Bendish, Todd Porter, and myself all have family members that are on this wall. The other parts that come into play, and Commissioner Zach Meyer, just a very quick correction, is that this recommendation is coming from the full committee. We have three subcommittees that were set up for the process of coming up with this concept. Commissioner Zach Meyer and Nikki Frelick served on the historical research with their efforts. We currently have 168 names that are rostered for consideration, which includes 127 of the existing names, which means 41 additional names have been identified for consideration. And coincidentally with that, Ms. Bickford and Mr. Zach Meyer sent me an email with three names in there, and I was digging on those three. I found three more. Digging on those three, I found one more. So, unearthing is an evolution that comes with time. Of that roster, Commissioners, if you look at your packet, you'll see the roster. The number-one thing that we want to do with this memorial is to make sure that we do not forget the following. So, that is the listing of names by conflict, alphabetical order. The asterisks on that roster identifies those names that are on the existing monument. You'll see the pound sign. The pound sign indicates those service members that served as prisoners of war. There were seven of them. And obviously, as prisoners of war, they were also killed as a prisoner of war. So, the -- another icon is the plus sign. That indicates those service members that never came home. There are 72 Morton County service members that are missing in action at this time. On this roster, there are two brothers, two sets of brothers. We have Alf Berman and Alger Bowman, both died during World War II, along with Arthur Fries and Robert Fries, both officers that died during World War II. There's 120 Army service members on the current roster that we have presented here, 168 names. There are eight Marines. There are 17 Navy personnel. There are three Army Air Service, which would be indicative of World War I. There are 19 Army Air Corps, which is indicative of World War II, because the Air Force was not created until the 1950s. And there is one representative from the United States Air Force that's on this wall. A couple of things will round the corner, if I may. Again, just highlighting a few areas is there is the dialogue about security. That focus is going to be more so on the construction. We're not there yet. Construction depends on fundraising. Fundraising is dependent on what the cost is. We have an idea, as Commissioner Zach Meyer said, we're benchmarking it at a million dollars, and part of that, part of the public input process was identifying how much dollars are coming from the county. That's not even being addressed one bit. We're just focused on fundraising a million dollars for this project. But, as Mr. Axeman identified with the enhancements within, the hardening within, that is taking advantage of something we never had before with the open curb concept, if you will. So, everything along that sidewalk boulevard is serving as a hardening element for the future security of the facility. The flag, the intention is, the question was, can that hold more than one flag? It most definitely can. The intention for the flag was to have something a little bit more proud, a little bit more prominent, instead of the static four-foot-by-six-foot, going something a little larger of possibly a 10-foot-by-six-foot, or even larger still, making sure that we have it set accordingly away from the building so it doesn't snag. Public input dialogue that came into play, again, as Commissioner Zach Meyer noted, was the discussion of radiant heat in that concrete. And as we talk more, it becomes more of, not so much a wish, but more of a need. Specifically, when we're looking at snow removal, the ability to keep equipment off of this that can help retain the integrity of the concrete. Not having to use salt retains the integrity of the concrete, which again makes this presence last that much longer. The current monument is 70 years. It's getting struck so many times by snow removal and weathered. We do not want to have that same concern for this one. The going around the ellipse, if you look at the overhead version itself, as mentioned, about the three wall panels, the conversation as far as the architects trying to scale it out, they were using one-inch font, and that would take the names covering the full face, and I believe it was a third of the backside. So, again, looking at, trying to scale that, trying to make sure that we have the proper presentation, and still have the ability to add, heavens forbid, that we need to. The Soldier's Cross, that's up against the wall, again, what's not being shown is the intent to use some of the existing stone, the granite, and the discussion is using that Soldier's Cross platform as that granite. And then the Soldier Cross is actually a modification of what is commonly seen with an M16. Our discussion was to use something a little bit more inclusive of all the generations of war, using an M1 Garand inverted in between two standard leather combat boots and a Kevlar helmet covering the butt of the rifle, and also having a dog tag hanging off the rifle as well. So, the M1 Garand would capture World War I all the way up to Vietnam. The leather boots basically captures every generation of war. The Kevlar helmet captures today's generation of war veterans and those lost at war. And the dog tag, the discussion is to have one dog tag say Morton County, the other dog tag say war dead. Up against the wall towards the entrance, where there's a placeholder of four Medal of Honor recipient placards of some degree, we have two identified Medal of Honor recipients that are from Morton County, but what we don't have is the details of how each of these presentations will be done. That is done in the actual design phase, once we get an architect approved, hired on. So, the gentleman that is in front of you today, Alf Hitter and Jake Axeman, they are basically contracted for the preliminary design phase, which is what we have now. The next phase would go into the overall design, then you get into the build and moving forward that way. But, part of that design was actually scoping out every little detail, because that's where the actual cost would come into play. We're not there. But, we do want to fundraise so that we can get dollars committed, so we can come back to the commission and request for that RFP process, we can get into the actual design phase itself. The committee, as we discussed earlier about diligence for naming and the quotes, we literally had 50 recommendations for a name. We went through five different ballot processes to hone in on the one name itself. The quotes were the same. We had, I think it was 55 quotes that were offered, and we honed in after five ballots to a small handful of quotes that the committee felt strongly to incorporate in this monument. The monument itself, I'm speaking a little selfishly, but the monument itself is very beautiful, so kudos to our architects. But, I just want to touch base on a few of those high points and ask that the commission, whether you want to go through a public meeting again. I do have results from, that's also in your packet. For the public presentations that we did, I pushed out surveys to every one of them. We had 44 respondents. Go through that if you bear with me. Flasher, we had four people representing Flasher that submitted surveys. Three from Hebron, zero from Glen Olin, zero from Almont, 22 from... Three from Hebron, zero from Glen Olin, zero from Elmont, 22 from Mandan, zero from New Salem, and five from rural Morton County. Now, as I say that, I also emphasize that we had a public input meeting in New Salem that had people from Elmont there as well. We also had a public input meeting in Hebron that also invited Glen Olin to come out. We also had a public input meeting in Flasher, and again, in Mandan. So every area of Morton County was represented through input. The scoring, scaling one to five, I rated, uh, one point for one, of course, two points for the two, three respectively. So the average scoring was 4.4 as far as distinct features showcasing the roster, service members killed at the time of war. The importance to incorporate inspirational quotes received a 3.1 average. Importance to incorporate physical statue or the battlefield cross or the Soldier's Cross, 3.9 out of 5, felt that is important. Incorporating a second nighttime image, the shadow up against the wall, uh, if you look at that, you see the service member coming through, and, and again, that comes to individual graphics as we get into that part of it, but you also notice that service member is in full combat gear. So again, 3.6 was the average response for that imagery. The importance to separate presentation Medal of Honor recipients, 3.9 overall average. Importance to incorporate public seating, 3.6 overall average. Overall space, the use of the overall space for monument design, 3.9 overall average. Rate the use of colors and textures within the renewed plaza design, 3.9 overall average. Space being used and being renamed as the Morton County Memorial Plaza, 4.3 average. Overall design of renewed monument, war dead, uh, the renewed Morton County War Dead monument itself being suitable, 4.2 overall. Morton County Commission should authorize implementation of this renewed monument and plaza space, 4.3 overall response. Morton County Commission should apply public funding for this renewed monument and plaza space, 3.7 overall average. And then the breakdown as far as whether, uh, percentage of that fell on a 2.5, and again, we're all stewards of our county funds and making sure we service the citizens of Morton County. That is a definite conversation for sometime down the road, but again, as I look at fundraising, we are not focused on asking for county funds, we're focused on asking for our public contribution. The ability to donate money, again, 3.5 was the overall average. So as far as the subcommittees, as I mentioned, we had the, the historical research, Commissioner Zach Meyer and Ms. Bickford served on that one, and with extreme diligence, they continued to dig. We had the criteria subcommittee, uh, they came up, the overall criteria that was adopted by the County Commission, so from, from this point forward, any name to include the ones that are surfacing right now will have to meet that criteria before they're being considered for final placement on the wall. They will also review each of the names that have been surfaced, to making sure that they meet the criteria as identified, and a point of reference with that criteria is there's nothing in the criteria that states that the, the service member has an award of valor or has an award of combat action or any of that nature, but that they are enlisted or commissioned in any branch of service at the time of death. Cause of death must be directly contributed to military operations and/or hostile engagement by a foreign adversary, and the hostile action or the foreign adversary must be recognized by DOD. So those are the criteria that we come up with, and then also another subcommittee that came up with the fundraising strategy that can definitely be deployed for the future construction of this monument. That included Glenn Reed, Gary Gorowski, and Todd Porter were part of that subcommittee. Commissioners, that's all I have for an update, now that my microphone can be heard.
Any questions for Commissioner Morel? I think you did a wonderful job, great. And Andy.
Ms. Chairman, another person that should be thanking this is Diane Boyd from the Mandan News and Bismarck Tribune. She's found a lot of newspaper articles to justify the names that are on this list as being Morton County, uh, citizens or born here.
Commissioner Zach Meyer, I want to jump on that one real quick, and I'm going to target something that you probably forgot that you have. But again, in the historical research that Commissioner Zach Meyer and, and Ms. Frelick have been, uh, working on, one of the things that, that Andy surfaced was the actual newspaper articles of the dedication and some of the background with this. I haven't had a chance to read that, but again, Commissioner Zach Meyer, I don't, I don't know that you remember that you have those.
Yeah, I just didn't think of that. No, Diane Boyd did a, a war, a ton of work, and the names you're currently seeing on this roster, there is a valid argument of why they should be considered a Morton County War Dead.
So Commissioners, the, the first ask is if, if the Commission wants to bring this forth as a public input opportunity, I will reserve that dialogue for the balance of the Commissioners for input, but I do ask that we be authorized to move forward with fundraising for this proposed final concept.
I think, I think, I don't know what I would better could be done with the concept than the, I don't.
Well, we've had the opportunity across the county to put your input in, and been going at this for over a year. There's been a lot of opportunities to voice your opinion and, and give your ideas to this committee. So, and you still can, you can still bring forth anything to us that we can take a look at. So, I guess whatever Commissioners want to do here.
Did we lose Ray?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Chairman, I'd be, if, uh, Commissioner Morel is ready to go with a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would request a motion that would authorize the Morton County War Dead Committee to, um, move forward with this final concept for the purposes of fundraising, but also have a second motion with that as well.
First motion then is on the table?
Yep.
I would second that.
Yes.
I would second the first motion.
Okay. It's been moved for the committee to move forward with using this concept for fundraising purposes. Is there any discussion, moved and seconded? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries on the first motion. Okay, Commissioner Morel?
Mr. Chair, a second, a second motion would be authorizing the Morton County War Dead Committee that upon successful, um, receiving of $500,000 in contributions, to be allowed to engage the RFP process.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
It's a lot of money.
Fifty percent, what do you think?
That's, uh, no, I suppose we gotta say one, there's a second.
I'll second that motion. So it's been moved and seconded to allow the committee to move forward with the RFP process at the, um, behest of gaining 500,000 in fundraising. Is there any discussion?
Ms. Chairman, it's a lot of money to come up with, but I believe that's pretty close to the same process that, uh, North Dakota used to build a new governor's mansion and the process, uh, for building a Theodore Roosevelt Library in Midora. That, uh, once they got, uh, halfway on construction costs, they started to engage contractors.
Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we will move into the last item on our agenda tonight, um, our resident park board director and his retirement. So in your packet tonight, and Commissioner Morel, you didn't see this yet.
I saw it in the park board packet.
Okay, yeah, he had put it in there, there's a signed copy on your desk when you can pick it up down here. But, uh, Mr. Nielsen, after, geez, I wasn't even sure how many years, they said it before, is...
Forty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven years with the county? That doesn't sound right, is that right?
Thirty-nine is in his, his, uh...
Is, is that what it is?
His, uh...
I didn't think it was that old.
He's not that old, Ray.
His letter.
July 7th. There it is, 39 years. Excuse me, should have known that, um, but yes, after 39 years of service to the county, Mr. Nielsen is deciding it's time to go have some fun and camp and fish, uh, and actually get to spend a lot more time in those parks that he spent a lot of time using, or building up and, and working at. So, before you, you have a, uh, letter of retirement that we need to accept, the park board did accept it before at our meeting at four o'clock, so with that, anybody have
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, uh, move that we accept the letter of retirement for Tim Nielsen, Nielsen as our Morton County Park Superintendent, and that he be commended for his continued dedication to Morton County Parks and the people of Morton County, much less their visitors that use our, our park services. Um, I've had, uh, we'll leave it at that, I was just gonna say, I had the privilege of working with Tim when I was on the park board many years ago, uh, we actually hired him as the, the superintendent for the parks, and he's just, if there's ever a person that is as transparent, as straightforward, as diligent and dedicated, it would be Tim.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the retirement notification from Park Director Tim Nielsen. Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries, and I would like to say we'd want to thank him also, because he taught me quite a bit in the four years that I was on that board. Does any, I do have a couple other quick notices here, um, there's a letter in your packet from the DOT on that ditch block that we had up to the north side, up by Honey Hills subdivision, just for your information, they, they wrote us a formal letter. And then, what was the other one? Oh, we have a draft policy that, make sure you guys go across, it's, uh, come up in the legislature that we need to provide a space for public comment during our meetings at all, at all meetings that are held publicly, and I think we did a very good job tonight of allowing people to talk, uh, and I, that's just needs to go into the policy, so we have a few guidelines. Uh, so with that, make sure you read through that and give Cheryl some comments back if you, if there's things you need to adjust or change. Okay? Does anybody else have anything good for the order?
Ms. Chair, I'm sorry, I got one more item.
Okay.
Um, working with our public information officer, Heidi Hamilton, who's probably sitting in the back of the room there.
Yep, she just waved.
And with, and with Don Roan, our county auditor, of updating our Morton County website. So Don Roan, um, states the last full upgrade was about seven years ago, and he, still that may have been a phased upgrade. We have had conversations with our current host entity, Catalyst, I've had secondary just superficial dialogue with, with private entities. Private entry would cost us approximately $30,000 to update our website with a whole, again, we're looking at a whole new look, refresh and, and coming in current compliance with, with today's web design needs. If we were to work with our, our existing entity, uh, conversation with them, we had Don, myself, and Heidi, we had a one-hour presentation with them, done it, peel off for work reasons, but Heidi and I stayed onboard, we chat at length with these people. Uh, currently, we pay $2,700 annually for hosting our website with them, which includes some technical services. If we do a full upgrade, we're doing an approximate $5,000 cost annually for the website. So Heidi has pushed out a survey internally and externally, asking all of our Morton County employees, as well as the public at large, to give input on our website so that we can use that to assess the next steps, uh, being a full analysis of the website, and again, the intention is trying to look at how we can service this website to be more interactive with our constituents. So working with our department heads, our departments, and also working with Catalyst, they have other services that can focus in for the tax assessor's office, for the treasurer's office, for the recorder's office, but we're, we haven't started that conversation yet because we're trying to figure out what it is that we want to incorporate based on feedback from our employees and from the citizens. So just a heads up that this is coming. Heidi is working very diligently with this and with Catalyst, uh, and again, with the survey, trying to get the information from our employees and from the ci-, uh, citizens at large. So heads up, please respond and look forward for more assistance when it comes to actually designing input for the revised website.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else good for the order? Seeing none, we are adjourned.